Please rise for silent invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Ford.
President.
Councilmember Tremont.
Here.
Councilmember Stilner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. We have a one-item agenda. Certainly makes it sound simple, doesn't it? Panhandling ordinance discussion and testimony. Matt Jones, would you frame the topic and tell us what we're going to be doing here tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, we've been working on the panhandling ordinance for some time now, Mr. Kahn and I. Kahn has brought this to the first of what's going to be three special hearings. So today we'll hear a little bit from Mr. Kahn as an overview, some testimony being provided. The second meeting will be the first reading of the ordinance. You guys all have a draft now of the ordinance, but maybe a couple minor tweaks before that goes to a first reading, but that's generally going to be what you see there in front of you as a draft ordinance. So just to get this thing moving along, go ahead and pass it over to Mr. Kahn.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for the privilege, and I mean that sincerely, of serving Port Orange to attempt to implement an ordinance regulating panhandling. There's several things that I want to start off by saying. First of all, we are going to respect everyone's rights during this proceeding. Tonight, we're going to be presenting evidence of the rationale for passing this ordinance by firsthand testimony. We are going to be respecting the rights of panhandlers. That is a very important thing to say. They are protected by the Schomburg case. They have their rights of free speech. They will be protected in this ordinance. That's first of all. Second of all, let us not confuse the item of panhandling with homelessness. I'm urging that. I, and I'm sure all of you all, are sympathetic to the homeless. However, not all homeless are panhandlers. Not all panhandlers are homeless. We're not legislating here regarding the homeless. We're only legislating regarding panhandlers and the effects of panhandlers. And we're going to hear firsthand testimony. Now, I'm going to begin with just a little background of me, very briefly. You all heard this before, but this is now the record of the first hearing of evidence. I've been practicing law for 43 years. For all of you Carolina fans, I'm sorry. I'm a Duke Law graduate, so my apologies right up front, okay? For all of you FSU fans, I'm sorry. I'm a gator, I'm a double-degree gator, so again, I'm sorry. And that's all I have to say about that. For the past 34 years, I've been blessed to practice constitutional and First Amendment law, representing, including rewrites, 35 cities and counties throughout the state of Florida. I'm proud to say my record in my ordinances is very, very good. None of my panhandling ordinances have ever been challenged. I have met through Zoom with each one of you. And I want to tell you my position on the fact that my ordinances have never been challenged. I'm glad of that. I'm glad of that. I hope your ordinance and the ordinance, I hope two things, three things. One, that it's passed. Two, that it's never challenged. And three, that it has the effect that my previous panhandling ordinances had on cities such as St. Augustine and Daytona Beach. That's what I hope. So tonight, we're going to commence an evidentiary record. And I'll intersperse it with comments, but most of all, you're going to be hearing from your own. You're going to be hearing from police officers. You're going to be hearing from firefighters. And you're going to be hearing from park and recreational personnel. The first thing I'm going to do, because I have a right under First Amendment law to do it, as I mentioned in my introductory meeting with you all, First Amendment law is what I call portable law. So I can rely on the record of other cities that have passed panhandling ordinances. And I was asked a great question by Dr. Ford. And Dr. Ford asked me a question that said, "Well, what if they're disparate? What if they're disparate personalities? What if they're different, disparate populations?" And all the way back, and this actually began with adult entertainment law, but it's portable law. First Amendment law's principles remain the same. With a very famous case in 1986, the Renton case, said that you could use studies and you could use disparate reports from different cities. So we have a right to buttress our own record with the records of panhandling ordinances that I've passed previously. And that's what I'm going to commence now. And if I fumble a bit in the logistics of it, you all will have to forgive me. Each city has different logistics with me introducing this record, but I'm going to begin.
Mr. Kahn, what was that case again?
Renton, R-E-N-T-O-N. And I'll give you the site for that later. I think it's 475 U.S. 41, but who's counting? But that's what I think it is. So the first thing I'm going to do is present to the clerk, and actually, I'm doing this a little bit for visceral effect, because I have a flash drive with all of this on it, which I will present, which will represent the enormous amount of record that you're going to see. So I have the physical record. And so the first record I'm going to present as Exhibit 1 is the record of the St. Augustine panhandling ordinance. In one second, I'm just going to hand it to Jane, and then she can have it. And then different cities do different things with it, but I'm presenting it for our record. Actually, let me take that back. Book, oh, let me see what Book 1 says. Should say St. Augustine. Yes, it is. A lot of presence. Probably branch your table. That's Exhibit. That's Exhibit number 1. Exhibit number 2 is the entirety of the record for the Daytona Beach ordinance, panhandling ordinance. Now Exhibit number 2, because it can, includes the entirety of St. Augustine's record as well. That was Daytona Beach's ordinance. So that's Exhibit number 2. Exhibit number 2 consists of two books. Now, what does this record constitute? It constitutes a variety of things. It constitutes testimony of both citizens of St. Augustine and Daytona Beach of the very same problems that you're going to hear tonight regarding the adverse secondary effects of panhandling from your own citizens. The very same problems. It constitutes, we will introduce separately, but it constitutes about 1,000 pages of medical studies. And the medical studies go to a self-evident premise, that public defecation and public urination, as well as unlicensed pets, which many panhandlers have, in my interviews with Port Orange citizenry. That's not as evident here as it is in others, other cities. That doesn't matter, okay? If it occurs, it has its own health hazards. So the 1,000 pages of medical records does apply to testimony that I have gotten, I knew I would, from citizens, from firefighters, from police, from park and recreation personnel about panhandlers, known panhandlers, engaging in open defecation and open urination. Ultimately, we will have a medical doctor's testimony, the same medical doctor who testified in Daytona, Dr. Stephen Miles, an accomplished physician, who will tell you that open defecation and open urination is inimical to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizenry of Port Orange. Why is that important? Well, Councilman Trevana and I had a dialogue about the case at issue. The case is Reed v. Gilbert. Reed v. Gilbert raised the bar for what we have to sustain to pass this ordinance, to strict scrutiny and compelling state interest. Dr. Miles will testify that the open defecation and open urination attributed to panhandling meets that bar head-on. But it's even more important now, ladies and gentlemen, because there's something else happening now. Dr. Miles will testify that this ordinance will mitigate the effects and the spread of COVID-19 on Port Orange. And we will have in the whereas clauses, some specifics about the reach of that spread. Anything will help, but to keep hygienics at their best is certainly in the interest of the Council and the citizenry and the tourists of Port Orange, but also goes directly to strict scrutiny and goes directly to a compelling state interest for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Port Orange. So that's what's in both the Daytona Beach and the St. Augustine record. Testimony by their own citizens of what you're going to hear tonight in any event, testimony by physicians, emails, supportive maps, which we'll talk about later, and also physicians' testimony and medical studies, which goes directly to satisfying the strict scrutiny and compelling state interest required by Reed v. Gilbert. And we'll get into much more of that later. Those are the first two exhibits. The real trick is, can I keep this microphone on this table without dropping on the floor? But we'll see about that. Two books were the Daytona Beach ordinance. Book 4 is, are medical studies independently put into this record? There's independent medical testimony. What I've done is exhorted Dr. Hissman's testimony in St. Augustine, as well as complaints of panhandlers, photos, and city records regarding Port Orange itself. And that's sufficient with regard, we misnumbered, it's actually, these are the books, it's four books instead of five. The next thing I wanted to do was read into the record what I'll say is Exhibit 5, which I actually read in the last introductory meeting that I had with you all, but it merits another read. This was an email by a citizen. The citizen was Maureen Mahone, M-A-H-O-N. You all heard this, but I want this specifically in the evidentiary record. This was sent into the city clerk's office to be read into the record at the August 19, 2020 city council meeting, from Maureen Mahone. "I have been a law-abiding citizen of Port Orange for 30 years and take much pride in calling Port Orange my home. In the last few months, I have been approached by panhandlers, not wearing face coverings, asking for money in front of Target in Port Orange. Most recently in front of Ross and Walgreens on August 15, 2020, very recently, while attempting to enter my vehicle, and once I replied no with my face mask on, this male panhandler on a bike screamed obscenities at me and tried to inten- intimidate me while staying on the bike by my vehicle." There's actually a photo of this individual that Ms. Mahone attached. "I reported this incident to the Port Orange Police on Monday, August 17, 2020. I was informed by the officer on duty that the influx of this homeless population is because Daytona Beach put a fine and jail sentence in place. Obviously, Daytona knew the panhandlers would come to Port Orange." That is not true, okay? As the author of Daytona Beach's ordinance, we didn't know what was going to happen. "And ornamented beach to avoid that. This influx needs to be addressed immediately as the safety reputation of Port Orange influences many to move here, and the safety of our citizens is most important, regardless of the current pandemic. Efforts must be made to curtail this issue for our many residents who respect our city. Thank you." And this was from the mayor, sent to Chief Grimaldi, among others, also Michael Johansson. "Jake, I received a call yesterday and got the following pics and message texted to me afterward. Maureen Mahone is agitated by panhandlers who have harassed her at local shopping centers. She filed a police report after one such incident. It was frustrated by our inability to act within current parameters, as the particular panhandler was not around by the time the call got answered. On Tuesday afternoon around 2, she stated she went into the lobby of the PD to amend her report because she was harassed again by the same person in the BJ's parking lot. This time, she got a picture of the person in question and wanted to pursue it. The nature of this particular complaint is she felt the person who aided her in the lobby was writing it off and didn't even take her information or the picture. She didn't feel she had a good customer service experience. We certainly understand her frustration about our problem with aggressive panhandling in our city and how this can push her emotionally to get a needed response. Can we have someone address her complaint and take her information and address it? Much appreciated with the mayor's signature." And this picture of the individual who did this to her. Another picture of the same individual. From an individual named Daniel Marco, what's happening in Port Orange email. "Quick rant. I get it, these panhandlers need money, but when they start walking up to me in people's cars in public parking lot and you don't give them money, they get me. I just jumped out on one for calling an older lady a bitch." A multiple other words, and multiple other words for not giving money. It needs to get under control before they walk up to the wrong car and they get shot. Can't even go to groceries without being harassed."
Mr. Kahn, could you supply the dates of those two emails?
Yes, ma'am. If I can do it. This one is not dated, so I cannot do that for that one. The next ones that I'm going to read are not dated either. The first email from Ms. Mahone was dated. It was read into the record as of August 19, 2020, city council meeting. The mayor got a call. He related it on August 1, 2020, and said that he had received a call yesterday.
Thank you.
So those are relatively recent ones. That is the next numbered exhibit. Jane?
Number 5.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Let's see if there's any other preliminary exhibits. Right, I understand. What they did when they said the 5 was, "We are going to introduce maps at a later meeting." And because what happened was, Ashley, I want to commend to you all again what I did in a letter, but it's important to me. With each jurisdiction, I get help. Without the help that I get, I can't do the job that I can do. You know, I laugh because every time I say my help from Daytona Beach, the mayor imitates his accent perfectly. It was Jim Cameron, I can't remember exactly.
Jiyam.
Jiyam.
Jiyam, J-I-Y-M. Jiyam Cameron.
It was wonderful to me. What he did was he arranged all my meetings for me. When I wanted to see somebody, I saw them. That person for me in Port Orange is Matt, is Matt Jones. Matt Jones not only did that, anytime I called Matt, no matter what I needed, he gave it to me. When he went over this ordinance, many city and county lawyers, and I understand it because one of my mantras is, "You don't do First Amendment at home. You don't do it. You think you know the cases, you think you know this, you think you know that and that." You know, after 35 years of studying all the cases, the cases are very nuanced. A case you think it means X, it may or may not mean X. But Matt really studied this ordinance, and he contributed to its being stronger. And so I appreciate him, but I also appreciate Ashley. As I said before in my letter to each one of you, Ashley, I can codify it, Ashley roughly saved this city around $23,000. And she did her work about mapping, because the ordinance I'm making is map-based. It creates parameters that regulate by time, place, and manner the panhandlers while maintaining their rights. Roughly in the city of Port Orange, 97% of the city will be available for panhandling. Some areas will not be available for panhandling. Those figures are rough. Ashley herself will testify to that. Book 5 of this series, when I was looking over my records, are those maps. What happened was, when I came up here and drove the city, I've never done an ordinance without being really familiar with the city. By the, with the aid of Matt, we drove the entire city, and we actually strengthened the ordinance by doing that. And so we had to recreate and Ashley's still working on the current maps. That will be an upcoming exhibit the next year. With those exhibits, I'm ready to go ahead and get into the testimony. And the first person I would like to call, we're going to have five policemen testify. The first person I'm going to call is Chief Thomas Grimaldi. Now, I didn't see where the court reporter is, though. Okay. Would you please administer the oath to Chief Grimaldi?
Sir, would you raise your hand, please? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the full truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Would you please give your full name to the council?
Thomas Grimaldi.
And where are you presently employed?
I'm the chief of police for the city of Port Orange.
And how long have you been so employed?
Five years.
Before that, were you employed with a police department?
Yes, I was. I was employed in the city of Bristol, Connecticut for 27 years, because the police officer was a special agent.
In your employment at the city of Port Orange, have you seen the effect of panhandling, Chief Grimaldi?
Yes.
Now, I'm going to talk to you, and this will be a very rough definition of aggressive panhandling. We're going to get into the details of it in a moment as well. But aggressive panhandling, roughly speaking, is when a person is panhandled and they refuse, that the panhandler persists by either going after the person physically, by swearing at the person, by touching at the person, by persisting in asking for the panhandling that the person is soliciting. And panhandling itself, I'm going to read you the definition of that. This is brief, the brief definition. "It means to beg or make demand or request made in person for an immediate donation of money or some other article of value from another person for the use of oneself or others, but not limited for a charitable or sponsor purpose that will benefit a charitable organization or sponsor," end quote. So first of all, do you understand my rough definition of aggressive panhandling?
Yes, I do.
Have you yourself, out of uniform, or even in uniform, have you been aggressively panhandled?
I have.
Would you please tell the city council your experience?
It was one time this, I believe it was in this summer, it was definitely this year, but I believe it was in the summertime. I was out in my Port Orange vehicle, which is an unmarked vehicle, dressed much like I am today, in a business suit. And I came across, I was coming out of a plaza, and a panhandler was at the entry or exit as I was coming out. And I happened to get the lucky one to be in line where the traffic was coming by and I couldn't get out of the traffic, so I sat stopped right next to him. It was a nice day, I usually drive with my windows down, crack about a couple inches. And he made a comment, a long line, or something like, hey, he had kind of a bucket, and he was asking for money, and I just shook my head. He responded with, "Thanks a lot," in a sarcastic manner. I was just trying to not effing sleep on the sidewalk tonight, something along those lines.
Now, I'm going to ask you, and I know some of the language is indelicate, okay? But when that language occurs, I want you to tell the council that language. You said, and I know the council will forgive you, but I want this record to be.
City manager of mine. Listen, I just hope my mom's not watching.
So what did you say?
So he basically said, "Thanks a lot. I was just hoping to not sleep on the fucking sidewalk tonight."
And what did you say to him?
I didn't respond at all. I just kind of stared at him a little bit, and I drove out into traffic when it was clear. He was on private property at that point. He was not blocking the roadway, he was not blocking the sidewalk. There was really few things I could have done with it, so I drove away, not happy about it.
Have you ever, in your duties as police chief, seen anyone else be aggressively panhandling?
I don't believe I've seen with my own eyes, actually observed it. Um, I don't believe I've seen with my own eyes, actually observed it. I've, I've been made aware of it as the chief of police. I think you read a couple emails. Those are not uncommon for me to get to most mornings.
Would you please describe, uh, to the city council, uh, to the best you can, uh, either the emails or any of the complaints that you have made by citizens or by your officers, by people who were aggressively panhandled?
Yeah, but mostly these complaints I get are by our citizens. I, I will say our officers are frustrated, uh, without a doubt, with a lack of ability to do much with this. This is a, it's been a challenge for us, uh, for the last couple of years, um, probably before that, and so, um, it is challenging for our officers and frustrating for our officers. Most of the complaints I do get are from our citizens, um, and they are more than frustrated. They constantly request for some type of action to be taken. Um, typically, we, we will contact them and explain where we're at and what we can do, certain things what we can't do, um, as the laws exist, and we want to respect everybody's right, but we do tell them what we can do, and we do. Our officers do go out there, and we try to do what we can. Um, we do believe in, in telling our citizens what we can do for them. And this particular circumstance is pretty limited. Um, and what we do is we limit to, we'll go there, we'll have a consensual conversation, a consensual encounter with the panhandler. And quite frankly, we look for things. Um, you know, drunk drivers, we look for it if, if it's out in the open, we have something to arrest them for. We will even look for if they have a milk crate, to be honest. And that's where we've gone to. Uh, we will, we will give somebody a citation for having a milk crate that doesn't belong to them. That's where we're at, we're grasshoppers, right?
Now, have you read, I know that, um, Mr. Jones has circulated to everyone who was testifying, as well as the council, the current proposed ordinance?
I have.
Okay. Um, is it your opinion, after reading the ordinance, that should the city council pass this ordinance as it's read to you with your experience as police chief, that it will help you and help the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Port Orange to regulate panhandling?
I do believe it would be helpful to, uh, to say yes.
Now... Do you remember any citizen or business owner ever complaining, or tourist, ever complaining to you directly or through your other officers that they have been aggressively panhandled or bothered by panhandling?
Again, I, I get a lot of different emails from a lot of different people all day long, and I do get a lot concerning, from our citizens concerning panhandling, including our business community. Um, I can't speak to, remember exactly which business. I, I believe, uh, one of our convenience stores, um, made a complaint, it was 7-Eleven, with panhandlers there. We tried to address that, we sent officers, um, again, private property, they're not allowed it. If the property ordinance does not allow them there, we go and we try to do trespass at that point. Um, so we, it gives us a little bit more teeth, um, but it's when they're not on that property, they stand right outside that property line, but yet it's affecting that business because it's affecting their patience.
Have you ever seen panhandling at a signalized intersection, um, where, uh, there's a red light and a panhandler is standing on the sidewalk attempting to get, uh, to get money or other things of value from the cars who are stopped at the red light?
Yes, oftentimes that's where they, they tend to tie their game.
And would you please tell the city council where exactly would that be?
So we have, uh, often at the exit ramps of I-95 and Taylor or Dunlap, um, and then, uh, for a while, we had some people down at NOV at Dunlap. And prior to that, we also had people at, uh, Route 1 and Dunlap as well.
Now, when you see these panhandlers standing on the sidewalk, and the light is red and the cars are there, and they are attempting to panhandle the people in the automobiles, are they a danger to themselves and to the citizens, uh, in the cars?
They are. When they step into traffic, certainly, you know, Dunlap, and if you've traveled Dunlap, particularly in the gay, you know it's a fairly, uh, voluminous travel. It, it, a high volume of traffic is, is on that road every day. Um, and the cars are moving, so that puts the panhandler in danger, but it also puts the motorists in danger too, because oftentimes they're going to try to swerve to avoid the panhandler. So, um, when they do step into traffic or travel portion of the roadway, it is a danger to everybody.
And they wait for the opportunity by standing on the sidewalk? Is that where they are?
Yes.
Okay. And they wait till the lights turn red?
They do.
And at times, have you ever seen them, chief, actually, uh, touch and touch the poles and push the buttons for walk and don't walk so they can actually control the traffic?
I haven't personally seen that. I believe some of my officers are, who are on the road every day, um, during their tours, and I believe they probably witnessed that. It's not something that I personally have ever, just heard that this happened.
Have you ever been told by any of your officers that the unknown panhandler knowingly defecates or urinates?
I've been told that, I, I believe, by citizens through, um, all those emails, through our feedback, highlighting complaint system, um, that that is occurring.
Can you remember any one instance where, uh, where you were told that?
I believe it was, uh, in our city parks. Or right, yeah, it was in our city parks, I believe.
Do you remember which city park?
I do now.
Mr. Con, are we permitted to ask a question any time?
Well, what we'll all do is as soon as I get done, um, uh, questioning the witness councilman, I will tender him to the council, then you all can answer. You, you all can ask any questions. Have you yourself or your officers telling you ever had occasion to examine a backpack that the unknown panhandler was carrying?
Yes, I do believe that we have encountered that.
And did you find, when you examined that backpack, any weapons or drug paraphernalia inside? And when I say you, I don't mean just you personally, but your officers who would relate this to you?
Yes, my understanding that both.
Both meaning?
Both meaning, uh, drug paraphernalia and weapons.
Now... The ordinance has a lot of distance parameters, and let me just, this will be for you, but also not to take up too much time. It'll be for everybody. Uh, let me just get, get them very quickly. "The ordinance prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction from any entrance or exit of commercial establishments, including restaurant drivers. It prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction from a vehicular exit from commercially zoned property onto a public roadway. It prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction of any bus or trolley stop or any public transportation facility. It prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction of an automatic, automated teller machine or any electronic information processing device which accepts or dispenses cash in connection with a credit deposit or convenience account with a financial institution. It prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction of any parking lot, parking garage, parking theater, or parking pay station owned or operated by the city. It prohibits panhandling within 20 feet in any direction of any public restroom owned and operated by a government agent, governmental agency. It prohibits panhandling within 100 feet in any direction of any daycare or school, including pre-kindergarten through grade through 12. It prohibits panhandling within the sidewalk approach within 150 feet of any signalized intersection of arterial roads, collector roads, and arterial and collector roads such as, as such roads are defined by the Florida Department of Transportation. It also prohibits panhandling at sites of outdoor dining. It prohibits panhandling after dark, okay? Um, but forgetting the after-dark prohibition right now. Every one of those other events describe what's known as a captive audience. People at all these places, at the ATMs, at the outdoor dining, at the bus stops, at the restrooms, at the entrances and exits of, um, uh, commercial establishments, they're captive. Do you understand the idea of captive audience?
I do.
Okay. First of all, um, those prohibitions that I've read, will they help the health, safety, and welfare, um, and the public safety and endangerment, um, that you've seen, uh, as the effects of panhandlers on the citizens and tourists of Port Orange?
In my opinion, yes, they would.
Now, the idea that panhandling is prohibited after dark, um, if you look at the provisions of the ordinance with regard to aggressive panhandling, it means several things. It means, one, to approach or speak to a person and solicit, demand, request, or beg for money or a donation of valuable property in such a manner as would cause a reasonable person to believe that the person is being threatened with imminent bodily injury or the commission of a criminal act, and upon the person approached or another person in the solicited person's company, or upon property in the person's immediate possession. For example, placing oneself within two feet of a solicited person and using abusive or profane language in a loud voice while demanding or requesting money. Two, to maintain contact with a solicited person and continue demanding, requesting, or begging for money or a donation of valuable property after the solicited person has made a negative response to an initial demand or request for money or a donation. For example, walking in front of, next to, or behind a solicited person while continuing to demand, request, or beg for money from that person after that person has refused to donate or give money. Three, to obstruct, block, or impede, either individually or as part of a group of persons, the passage or free movement of a solicited person or a person in the company of a solicited person, including persons on foot, on bicycles, in wheelchairs, or operating motor vehicles or persons attempting to enter or exit motor vehicles. For example, walking, standing, sitting, lying, or placing an object in such a manner as to block passage of another person or vehicle, or to require another person or driver of a vehicle to take evasive action to avoid physical contact. Four, to touch or cause physical contact, or to threaten to touch or cause physical contact to a solicited person or a person in the company of a solicited person, or to touch any vehicle occupied by a solicited person or by a person in the company of the solicited person without the person's express or consent. Or last, to engage in contact that would reasonably construed as intended to intimidate, compel, or force a solicited person to accede to demands. Now, chief, that's the entirety of the definition of aggressive, uh, aggressive panhandling. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Do you believe that prohibiting those conducts after dark, okay, as it's defined in the, which is after sunset and before sunrise, um, would help the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and tourists of, uh, Port, uh, Port Orange, as well as mitigating the danger of that?
Yes, in my opinion, yes.
And what I'll do with each succeeding officer, I won't do that. Now, I'm just going to, I'll reference that to see if they remember the definitions so we don't have to go through that every time. One second. Have you ever, yourself or your officers complaining to you, uh, seen panhandling either at ATMs, near outside dining, near exits or entrances to businesses, near bus stops, near parking lots or parking meters? That means not just yourself, but your officers complaining that that's what they've seen to you?
Yes, I have. As I stated earlier, um, many of my officers, most of my officers are frustrated by limitations of how we can handle and address this issue.
Chief, I'm now tendering you to the, uh, to the council for their kind of, for their questions.
Counsel? Uh, Chase, you indicated that you have one. Go ahead, why don't you start?
Yeah, a couple of, can I ask, I'd like to ask one question, uh, Mr. Con, or just a legal question on the Renton case. Can the records, um, you know, I believe you stated that you can use records from other cities. Now, you pointed to the Renton case, that being commercial speech, how does that differentiate from individual speech?
It wasn't, it wasn't commercial speech. The Renton case was First Amendment speech. As a matter of fact, a lot of the, a lot of the litigation and principles of the Renton ca, uh, you know, began with the Renton case in, in a lot of different ways in 1986. It was an adult entertainment speech, and adult entertainment, um, has also been declared protected, albeit marginally so, erotic speech by First Amendment. It was not commercial speech at the time, clearly it was not.
But it was a business establishment, though, was it not?
It was, it's still First Amendment speech. In other words, in other words, every time I have been employed, and there's only really one reason, councilman, I haven't been employed as much as usually about, uh, to regulate adult entertainment, and that's called the internet, okay? So, uh, for many years, that's how I began my, my practice, was regulating adult entertainment, is First Amendment speech.
Uh, Mr. Jones, can you expound on that, uh, because, you know, based on our conversations we've had, because we've zoned, we've passed an ordinance such as this for adult entertainment here, but we can't, I was under the impression that we can't apply those same, those same ordinance to panhandling, uh, because we differentiate between commercial speech from individual speeches. There's much stricter scrutiny involved in that, is there not?
We're, it is similar in that we are attempting to address some secondary negative effects if you'll get it that way. Um, so there are some similarities in that regard. They're both considered protected speech, um, and afford the First Amendment protection. So, um, you know, we've, we've kind of already indicated on the record what the scrutiny we're up against. We know it's the top. So I don't know what we're, I mean, it is strict scrutiny, we know that. We're, we're going to build a record to support the compelling government interests that are at stake here, so I don't, I don't think it's relevant to the conversation right now.
It's been incontroverted through all throughout First Amendment. Uh, the case that afforded, um, adult entertainment speech in those establishments. Erotic dancing is protected by the First Amendment, it's Barnes versus Glenn Theater, 501 U.S., 560, for those who care.
A couple more, but, and let me preface this by saying, you know, I, you know, we reckon, I appreciate you being here again.
Thanks.
I have read through it, it very, it is unique, and, uh, you know, you remember my position, I did not support this going forward. That being said, it's not my goal to trip anybody up, I just, and I'm genuinely a very open mind.
I believe you.
And I, because our residents, you know, something needs to be done, clearly. I didn't support it early on because I just, I, I have a hard time believing that it is constitutional. At the end of the day, I still don't feel in my gut, in my heart that it is, I won't support it, but I'm looking for every reason possible to support it.
And during COVID, councilman? And during COVID, Councilman, the evidence that you're going to hear Dr. Miles give you, he testified in both Daytona and St. Augustine what could happen. Post-COVID is happening. So, unfortunately, the advent of COVID in this community supports this ordinance and going straight for strict scrutiny. But it's without a doubt a fact that, I can say it two ways. If I didn't have the opportunity to put 4,000 pages into the record with Daytona and St. Augustine, this ordinance would still stand. But because of Renton and a series of cases, basically, we can do this. It's the secondary effects position. One of the cases is Booth's Be buried, but it does adhere here and gives this ordinance strength. But if you were to focus as a councilman on any evidence, this is my opinion because we've talked before. Listen to your citizens, to what they're enduring with the adverse secondary effects, and listen to Dr. Miles, who's going to testify as to the endangerment of them of a, easily a strict scrutiny compelling state interest.
Chief, you said a little bit ago that you had folks on Nova Road for a while and then US-1, are they still there, do you know?
I don't believe so. I believe, we have a pocket right now on Nova, a little further down from Dunlaughton, from Dunlaughton to Village Trail. There's about, for some reason, there's about four different panhandlers in that pocket. We're always out there, and so they kind of move around a little bit, but it's like a fish and all, right? You're not going to go back to the same fish and all if you're not catching fish. They're making, somebody's giving them something because they keep continuously going back. And they find that pocket right there to be lucrative for them, apparently. So, we try to stay on top of it, but again, our officers are out there, we're looking for what we can do. We're just looking for a little.
And I recognize that there are certainly people out there. I see, I see my same buddy every day at Madeline, right outside the Walmart, with this long stick looking to get something. I see him outside Big Lots, and even on Madeline Avenue, believe it or not, not next to any gas station, just right outside of.
So, interestingly, Councilman, you bring up this stick and the bucket, if you will, on the end of the stick. So, our officers are out there enforcing when attorney kind of brought up going into the street. Well, that itself is a violation of law, and we cite that appropriately. It's kind of built a better mousetrap, right? So, they caught on to that, and now this is what they're doing. It really comes down to where they're at. It's that captive audience at that traffic, at that intersection, at that traffic lane. And that's where they still hang out because that is a captive audience. But it is kind of interesting to watch them with their sticks now, it's kind of ingenious.
I hand it to them for creativity.
Yes, the necessity is the mother of all inventions, I suppose.
Well, when we're talking about, you know, aggressiveness and things of that nature, if somebody is physically touching somebody, can they be arrested for that?
No.
If somebody stands at the side of the road and purposely manipulates the traffic signals, is there a violation of that?
I think that one we'd have a very, very difficult time in proving that they were working the lock button to manipulate. I would be proved, but it's out in the public.
Public defecation, is there a law against that? Can be arrested for that now? How about abusive language if someone is being publicly berated? Is there anything that law enforcement can do?
It would depend on the situation, certainly situational. I gave you my situation when I was out there. There's many cases out there that says a police officer's peace cannot be breached. So, we don't go down that road anymore like maybe we used to many years ago. So, it would certainly depend on the situation, and if there were people that were willing to come forward and make those complaints. What we're finding is a lot of people are not willing. They don't complain to me, they will complain to the mayor and complain to the city manager, and maybe to all of y'all as well. When it comes down to giving us a statement and standing up in court, maybe, they're afraid of this, and so, for whatever those reasons are. So, we don't get a lot of that. I call it cooperation. It's not to say our citizens are not cooperative, law enforcement, because they are, but I understand their concern as well.
Chief, how will you differentiate between, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I just wanted to inject, I appreciate the question you're doing. Chief, in this kind of questioning from all of the council in terms of enforcement, can you also just try to touch base from time to time, the difference between things that have to occur in the presence of the officer versus when they don't occur and those kind of complexities? Because I think he's asking some great questions, and just for those who might be watching this and trying to figure it out, there's a lot of issues with that, let's just kind of touch base.
One other point, too, if you're going to be questioned like this, understand and also be free to comment, even if there's a duplication of offense, we're talking about regulating panhandlers. It doesn't matter if there's five different offenses that people can be charged with, this is an ordinance that regulates panhandlers which independent, if Dr. Miles is right, and he's testified twice, and Dr. Himmick for St. Augustine, and Dr. Kushner for Delaware Beach, has its own, I mean, we're talking about regulation of panhandlers, but please answer any questions.
Correct. And so, some of these things that we're talking about are byproducts, maybe, of the panhandling and/or the panhandlers. And so, but there are, as Councilman Silver talks about, there are certain crimes that by law we have to witness. We can't just even take somebody, cause, at least Sasha has to witness. I couldn't name all those laws. You'd be better off asking my officers behind me right now, because we're the practitioners of that, they actually do it every day. But there are many laws like that, and so, we just can't take a statement from somebody that would.
Yeah, I understand. And again, let me just be perfectly clear, it's not my intent to trip anybody up, but it's a quick trick question. When we're talking about regulating someone's First Amendment right, I want to ask everything I can. How will you differentiate between the person that is noticeably asking for money from a person who is simply sitting on the side of the road and people are giving him money, and he's not saying anything? But it's clear why he's there, but, you know, his message is, I don't, he's not really saying anything. I'm picturing the gentleman out in, at Madeline Avenue.
He's covered, Councilman, I have to say.
I'm sorry?
If you read your ordinance, that specific situation is covered. He doesn't have to say anything. He's a panhandler.
So, a person that's not doing any of those aggressive panhandling tactics and is simply sitting there and somebody has chosen to offer him funds even though he has not asked anybody, he's sitting there and someone's giving him cash flow, he is not permitted to be there?
He's, only in certain, in 97% of your city, just in certain instances, you don't, you know, just give an example and think practically. You're sitting at an entryway, this is the thing that Matt and I added to your ordinance specifically for a reason. You're sitting at an entry and an exit to a public roadway. Cars are backing up. You have a person who is interfering with that traffic flow passively, actively, sitting there with a can with money in it?
What if he doesn't have a can? It's just a.
Well, it didn't matter. I mean, in the sense that, you know, if he is in any way deemed to be soliciting for funds, he shouldn't be there, he doesn't need to be there. And he's causing danger to your citizens being there. And I'll ask it that way, just looking at exactly what the councilmen say. They're saying with, I drove by and I saw a guy in a wheelchair, and he was at an exit of a shopping center, and there were cars that were stacked up, okay? Is that man causing them by sitting there, now he had a hat out and was requesting money just by his hat being out? Is he causing your citizens danger?
Yes, and he's causing concern from the citizens as well, which translates into cause for violence.
Chief, I've seen a man sit on the sidewalk near, off of Madeline Avenue, near a neighborhood entrance, has never approached anybody that I've seen, doesn't have a hat out, but never can, doesn't have a sign. Never seen him have any interaction with anybody. Based on that, see a danger?
Based on the way you described it, maybe not. But I can't say that. What I can say is I know where you're speaking of, and with this ordinance, he would be in violation because he's, basically, there's a stop sign right there at the intersection.
All right. I'm sure I'll have more throughout tonight, but I'm good right now. Again, I just want to, I want to turn over, so, thanks, Chief.
Marilyn, questions?
No.
Group questions?
Yeah, sure, a couple. Chief, you said you had, one of the tools was, you know, when they're on the sidewalk at a red light, and they walk into the road, reach into the car from, you know, they're walking, caught a car with them, and they can be cited for that. And I'll be the person that has the department, have your officers actually written citations for that?
We have. We actually, at one point, our detective division, we had them put all their cases on hold, and I think it was two consecutive days, we sent our detectives out there in parked cars, plainclothes, just to watch, to observe, and then once they saw it, they reacted. And they issued, I can't remember how many citations, but yes, we have done that.
And were any of those, did any one individual receive more than one citation perhaps? Like, they didn't get the message?
I do believe, yes.
Well, we'll hear from four more officers.
Okay. A little back question. And make sure you ask it.
You have that tool, and you said the trespass tool, you know, public, or the shopping centers or stores or whatever, and obviously, you probably have a person, but the officers have trespassed multiple.
Yes, we've actually had some of our commercial citizens, if you will, commercial businesses, call us and ask us for preauthorization forms. So, they preauthorize us, they sign it, and they preauthorize us, it's an automatic process. So, we have to go up there, give a warrant, it's not, but they give us the permission to do that.
And then, I mean, I don't, but if that same person were to return after they've been trespassed and do the same thing, then it would be a restful, restful case. Okay, one other thing that I see pretty much every day, littering, they leave their little areas on their corners and their sidewalks, food, drink containers, trash, is that something that you guys have utilized that littering ordinance to write a site for littering when they are leaving and they leave everything?
Yeah, we have, and as silly as it sounds, that's one of the things we have to do, right? So, we know that Mr. Smith is at this corner, and, you know, when he leaves, at the end of the day, you just can't make that leap and say, that's his garbage. We actually, I see that, it's one of those observations.
He's basically would have to see them, perhaps, walking away or riding away on their bicycle.
Maybe even doing the littering, right? So, unfortunately, I don't have an officer for every corner, I wish I did, but we don't. So, it's really challenging. Like I said back, I think it was in the spring, we did an operation where we held our detectives, which is very unusual, put all your cases on hold, and go out and do what I call quality of life crimes.
Sure.
And so, they did, and they did a phenomenal job. And maybe as we, maybe even last year, but the point being is we just don't have that ability to do that all the time. But it is something, Councilman, that, yes, we can, it is.
That is one of your tools, but that's.
It is one of the tools, that's just one of those differences.
I was just curious on that, like, I mean, I literally see the trash.
Yeah, it's not a cop.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Scott? Mr. Connell, back to you. Chief, before you exit the podium, do me a favor, slide that microphone over so that the next person can speak from over here. Is it a little?
It's tethered here.
Is it? Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that we're maintaining a safe distance.
They're going to stand at the podium, though, that's where it's for.
Yeah.
That's where you should have been.
That's where I should have been?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we're maintaining a safe distance, so Mr. Connell, Mr. Connell, maintaining a safe distance here. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Connell?
Yes, Captain Ken Hillpatrick.
There you go.
Thanks for doing it the right way, Captain.
I'm pretty sure I can, man, pretty square, order firm. The test one you're about to give will be the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth will help you back.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so observing social distancing, I'm going to do something with ordinance. Shove this over. Would you please identify what that is?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is a panhandler tracking. I instructed an officer that's currently on light duty, a couple of them, to compose a list of all the panhandler incidents that we've had since January of this year, and it's up to yesterday.
And let me back up and ask the preliminary questions. If I, would you please state your full name for the city council?
Kimberly Hillpatrick.
And by whom were you employed?
Sir, City of Port Orange, please permit.
And what is the nature of your employment?
I am the captain of the patrol division.
And how long have you been so employed?
With the city, 24 years.
Now, that document that you have is by no means all of the incidents of panhandling in the City of Port Orange, correct?
Not all of them, but most that we capture in our dispatch cabs.
And would you describe to the council, what do you mean by dispatch cabs?
Most of these calls are coming in through citizens that call in to dispatch to complain, or business owners that have called in complaining about subjects, panhandlers in the area.
And who do they call in?
Who do they call?
Yes.
At the dispatch center?
Yeah, do they, do these individual citizens, business owners, call specific number?
Yes.
And who do they reach at that number?
Just a telephone operator at county dispatch.
Do, does that encompass all of the individual complaints that each officer has had about panhandling or aggressive panhandling?
No.
Okay. If you might just shove it back my way. This will be marked as the next number exhibited, which is?
Six.
Okay.
Four.
Yeah, composite six.
I'll put stickers on it, maybe.
Okay, that's good.
Good to see the language has been cleaned up.
Do you have knowledge of each one of these incidents yourself?
No.
Okay. And what do the zones indicate? How many zones are there in Port Orange?
We have eight, seven zones, hopefully eighteen, but we have seven, and basically, what it does breaks down the zone, so I know what zone officers or the area that's depicted in the tracking.
Okay. One of them, if I might just cite your attention to one, it was on August the 3rd, 2020, at 3805 Nova Road, and then there's a name attributed to it, and what does that mean, if you don't mind? Is that the name of the panhandler?
Yes, that's the person that's surrounded.
Look at that particular one, and what is that? Is there a notation about what that particular panhandler did?
Yes, it was urinating on the sidewalk.
Thank you. I'll just cite a couple more because I don't want to delay the record this much. But they're meaningful. Do you recall me reading the aggressive panhandling definition?
Yes, I did.
This ordinance bans aggressive panhandling throughout the city of Port Orange. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. In your opinion, as a captain and with your experience, is that going to help mitigate dangers to the citizens and tourists of Port Orange as well as helping their health, safety, and welfare?
Yes, I believe so.
If you look at the entries of 1720, they don't have the name of the panhandler, but just, would you tell the council their outcome under the outcome clause?
1720 subject was harassing people in the parking lot.
Does it say which parking lot?
Cool begins.
What is your initial GOA mean in some of your entries?
Gone on arrival.
And the other entry that I wanted you to talk to the council about, please, ma'am, was 13?
That was at Walmart. Subject was being belligerent and hostile with the employees.
Same for the next, and then I'm going to push this over to you again, composite exhibit six, for 10-120 and 92920. What were the outcomes?
We have a couple.
Okay. Does it name the panhandler on either?
We have four of them on 10-120, different locations.
Which zones are there?
30, 40, 50, and 10.
And the first 13 and 17 that you just talked about, what zones are they?
40.
Okay. Back to the 10-120, what are the outcomes of those?
Panhandler drinking in public, panhandler was trespassed, the other one was just an ongoing complaint, nothing issued. And this fourth one, panhandler was knocking on people's windows of the vehicle.
Then, if you would, 922 and the first one on 930. If there's a name of the panhandler, give me the zone too and the outcome.
That's at SunTrust Bank, 20 zone, panhandler that is screaming at customers, creating a disturbance. That's there.
And there was another date?
23, the first one on the 23rd. That's at 1751 Dunlauton, somewhere down by Lowe's. I think that, aggressive panhandler calling people names.
Now, in your 24 years working for, take that back, I can't delay the record, working for Port Orange, have you seen, have you seen the effects of panhandlers?
I've seen a bit change, yes.
Describe to the council, I use your words, big change.
When I was here years prior, obviously, we didn't have panhandlers like we have now. And I can tell you through conversations that myself and other officers in the agency, when we heard Daytona was enacting an ordinance, we knew this was going to happen. If we had bet money on it, we'd probably be pretty rich right now because we knew this was going to happen. We knew that Daytona was going to enforce the ordinance that they had, and it was going to drive people to our city. You know, before, we used to just deal with burglars coming from Daytona, but now we have the panhandlers that are coming. And we actually get some smaller crimes, death crimes, through the panhandlers that, as a matter of fact, just a couple weeks ago, Cumberland, Arizona, a panhandler went in, stole a can of beer, and took off.
And excuse the repetitious nature, but I'm going to drive forward on this. Having heard just the aggressive, the definition of aggressive panhandling, banning it alone, if the ordinance did nothing else, banning it alone from the city of Port Orange, would that again mitigate dangers against the citizens and tourists of the city of Port Orange and help the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, have you yourself ever seen or been aggressively panhandling?
I have not, no.
Have any of the officers, or how many officers are under your command?
About 60.
Okay. Any of the officers under your command talk and complain about citizens being aggressively panhandling?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just cite to the city council in order to keep as brief a record as possible tonight, any one instance?
There was a recent incident, it was just before Thanksgiving. I know his name, but I won't say it. He's a subject that sits on Dunlauton near McDonald's exitway. A citizen had called, I heard it over the radio, that he was waving his prosthetic leg at them in an aggressive manner after they refused to give money. So the officers went there, obviously, they did not observe it happening. The caller was not still on scene, so the officers basically just continued with the course of action and just, you know, talking to him briefly, and then he remained there for the rest of the day.
You heard the chief say that passing this ordinance gives you another weapon to use with regard to regulating panhandling. Didn't you hear him testify on that?
Yes, I did.
And you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever seen anyone standing on a sidewalk, I'm talking about the act of going into the street, near a signalized intersection of an arterial or a collector road, pushing the button for walk, don't walk, or else soliciting people who are backed up at a red light for funds?
I've seen them, yes, soliciting at the lights. I have not seen them manipulating the signals.
Have you ever had, in your duties as a captain, the duty to go through a backpack that a known panhandler was carrying?
Normally, I don't. However, the chief had mentioned that the detectives went out, that was under my command. We went out last year specifically to target aggressive panhandling. I did go out with a subject that was notorious for being at I-95. We did go through his backpack. There was some paraphernalia. He actually was cited as well for obstructing traffic in the roadway. And there was another, I made an arrest with the detective sergeant at the time. There was somebody, and they had beer, open can, they tried to get rid of it as we walked up on them, so we ended up arresting him for obstruction of evidence.
You heard me read the distance parameters that are written into my panhandling ordinance, correct?
Correct.
20 feet for example, ATS, 20 feet, you know, not near outside dining, et cetera. Do you understand the concept of a captive audience? That is, a group of people that are in a line, and they just can't leave. Do you understand that concept? Do you believe that parameters, with your experience, your 24 years of experience at Port Orange, do you believe that the parameters set forth in that ordinance are going to both lessen the endangerment of citizens and tourists of Port Orange and help the health, safety, and welfare of those citizens? Again, hard, going back to my definition, or I read it word for word, of aggressive panhandling, do you recall that definition?
Yes.
By banning panhandling in the town of, in the city of Port Orange, after dark, okay, which is defined here somewhere, and I think it's an hour before sunset and an hour after sunrise, will that once again lessen the endangerment of those citizens and help the health, safety, and welfare of those citizens to ban after dark panhandling?
Yes, I think the citizens, we have a lot of runners from Palmer College, and I know some have been intimidated by the perception of panhandlers being out there, you know, because you don't know the mental status of them as well. So they're running on the sidewalks, and at nighttime, when you have one sitting across the sidewalk, it tends to be a little intimidating, and the quality of life of our citizens is affected.
Other than composite exhibit six, which was the list of panhandling incidents that was compiled and that you, Mr. Khan, provided, I mean, have you yourself, in any other instance, seen anyone doing aggressive panhandling?
When I went out with the detectives for the two days, we did try tracking down a woman that was in the Ross parking lot. She was, there was a complaint of her following people to their cars. So we went over there, we were watching the parking lot. I did not capture her following somebody, however, they were walking from a vehicle, and I watched her, they, she went across Dunlauton, so detectives stopped her on the other side. We ended up citing her for not crossing within a crosswalk, so.
Now, one of the incidents that I've kind of led you to in your, in composite exhibit six, talked about a known panhandler urinating on a sidewalk. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Two other officers who talked to you, business owners, tourists, have you heard of other incidents where known panhandlers have either openly defecated or openly urinated?
Specifics, I don't recall, but I do know there was a conversation I had with a manager at Circle K, Herbert Nova, because the panhandlers there are trespass from the property. So they came up once about using the bathrooms, because they're not allowed in the store to use the bathroom, so obviously, the panhandlers are going somewhere.
The intersections where you've seen panhandlers standing on sidewalks, and then when the red light turns and there's a backup of cars, that they intercede and attempt to panhandle, are they, could you name them for me? In our last conversation, I think you talked about Nova and Herbert, and I think you said at least another one, but I'm not sure.
Nova and Herbert, Nova and Village Trail, Village Trail and Butterfly. We've seen a couple. I just actually got a complaint from a gentleman in Brandy, the public vision, that complained about a group that has recently popped up near where Mr. Tremont was talking about, on Madeline, but they're at Madeline and Nova. The gentleman at Deer Springs and Madeline sits by himself majority of the time, and
When you've been off duty, have you yourself been aggressively panhandling? Have you yourself, either visually or through complaint by customers or other officers under you, been told about panhandling near ATMs, near outside dinings, near to exits or entrances to businesses, near bus stops, near parking lots or parking lots?
Yes, I get them through our Citizen Connect, where citizens can write in the complaint. I've actually monitored quite a few on social media. It comes up on our Port Orange Facebook page. There's been lengthy conversations from citizens about all the panhandlers and how the officers don't do anything, we're not doing anything to control it or handle it. So we take a little bit of a beating from the citizens on that.
And similar to the email from Ms. Mahan that I started off with? So rass and exclusive repetitious nature, but this is a sum up question. Is everything you've seen and heard over the 24 years you've been here, do the elements and the provisions of the ordinance that I've prepared for Port Orange help lessen the endangerment and help the health, safety and welfare of Port Orange's citizens as well as its tourists?
I think it does.
Thank you. And I'm going to tender to you now to the city council's request.
Let's start at this time, this time. Scott?
Captain, if you can just explain, expound briefly. We're talking about, and I think Attorney Khan mentioned it earlier, we're really talking about a panhandling ordinance tonight, although there are characteristics, I would call them, of what is commonly known to be associated with panhandling. You just expound on the challenges, because I know you've covered a couple of examples there, like the urination and the frustration of a law enforcement officer to not be able to necessarily enforce things that don't happen in their presence and how that, how that, we get the call, you guys get the call, and then they get there, and then that particular act that you could possibly enforce now isn't occurring any longer, so you can't actually see that and how that plays out in law enforcement versus visually being able to commonly see the act of panhandling.
Correct. Right, the urinating, public, defecating, obviously, you know, that's by luck if an officer happens to drive up and catch it happening. The other incidents, such as like a breach of peace or anything disorderly, anything like that, with the vulgar language or the threatening manner, things like that, if we don't have witnesses or people to say, to do sworn statements that we can try to act on that, then again, if the officers aren't there to see it, nobody's there to testify, we can't enforce anything, so.
And by enforcing it, you mean the independent charges that could be brought?
Correct, yes.
And then lastly, too, as a matter of practice for the patrol officers, like there is this, there is this, I think, a misconception that panhandling and homeless is the same thing, and we have found that not to be the case at all. But as a matter of practice, do the patrol officers typically, when they encounter panhandlers, investigate to see, are they homeless, are they in need of services, are they offered services, and do they typically accept services or do they refuse services and then just continue to panhandle?
Great question. Actually, we keep track of all our contacts with panhandlers and homeless, reference the First Step Shelter that opened in Daytona. So we do keep track every day and night shift, how many contacts are made and how many are receptive to the services. And I can tell you, there's probably a 95%, and that's probably being, you know, the low end they're trying to stay, but they refuse services. Nobody wants to go up to the shelter. We've had, I did have one gentleman last week that requested a ride out there, but he came to us, actually. but he came to us, actually, so, yes, but no, we don't get very, a great response on having them go out to the shelter or accept our services through our victim advocates for bus passes, food, shelter, or clinics, things like that, so.
That's it, ma'am, okay. Attorney? Can you tell me, I just have a question, how long a typical interaction would take? You get a call, you know, whether they call 911 or it's emergency or not, and you get dispatched, you get there, and you go through the conversation with the person, what, typically, how long does that encounter last?
You'd probably, at minimum, I'd say probably 10 to 20 minutes, so you're there, you're looking around, you're trying to observe a violation without immediately making contact, so the officers will try to see if there is a violation before just making contact, if they don't observe anything, that contact is made, the name is ran through the system to see if there's any more, things like that.
And then, do you ever see, after that contact, do they move along?
No.
If they don't, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so far, and I really, I really do want to give you guys every tool and blocks to do, I want it to be done correctly, question I have, and either/or could answer it, to be honest with you, a lot of these complaints read thus far have occurred on private property, how would this ordinance impact that, because do not private property owners already have the ability to prohibit panhandling on the property now at this point?
I could say, the recent call that I just discussed about our, one subject, he's a visual here, with shaking his prosthetic leg at a woman, he actually is trespass from that property, so he's on the sidewalk, so that specific gentleman, and we've had numerous complaints about that gentleman spinning at people near Ant Catfish's, the owner of Ant Catfish was extremely upset about this gentleman being there on the sidewalk, spinning at people, yelling at people, chasing people, well, not chasing, that's probably not the right word, but following them, if you will, so, yeah, and then he ended up moving to Dunlon and Nova area, because we have been out with him so much.
And one thing I can add, counsel, if you permit me to, is when I was driving here with Matt June, what I saw was individuals that were adjacent to private property, and they were on actually rights of the way, and I think they know exactly what they're doing when they're there, it was why I added, and this was Matt's, mechanically Matt's idea and my idea, was to add a specific provision in the panhandling ordinance, because we talked about this, one-on-one with some of you, because what was happening here is a little bit different, because your community's a little bit different, and one thing I want to say, and I meant to say this in my introductory remarks, I want this kept in context of saying it, because you're a, you're really a bedroom community, a residential community with certain places of business, it's easier to, it's easier to support your ordinance as it's written, I want to say that, okay, one of the things that Matt and I added was the provision in the ordinance that panhandling is prohibited within 20 feet in any direction from a vehicular exit from commercially zoned property onto a public roadway, that was done, I'll give you an example, there was one individual, unnamed, panhandler, who when I was discussing it with a council person, was saying that he was causing a problem at a certain location, and was fearful that if I regulated him merely at that location, that he would merely shift our location, and I'm able to regulate it in this way, because it's on private property, it's a backup of the cars that are waiting to leave, and the chief has just testified that that's a danger, and so we've added that to the ordinance, so the short answer to your question is, the individuals that I saw were not on private property, but were actually on roadways, or right of ways.
Can I just add, please, most of our cafes and shopping centers have a, like a standing trespass warning order, so if we do find panhandlers on their property, we already have the blessing from them to issue a trespass warning, so it kind of trickles out, because now they're off the private property onto the city sidewalks, and that's where we end up dealing with most of them.
So far, we have, with our two witnesses thus far, we haven't seen any really eyewitness accounts of aggressive panhandling, and I imagine some of our later officers might have that, so if the officers aren't witnessing, witnessing the aggressiveness at the time, how will this ordinance give them teeth to enforce it?
Well, it's different, okay, it's different, because number one, it's not directly a criminal ordinance, it would be indirectly as far as your structure of craft laws, and they would have a witness, unlike your, and I think that's what the councilman was inferring here, some questions that Vice Mayor was inferring, there's, is that if somebody is coming forward and complaining about a panhandler, the panhandler under the ordinance would be asked to move along, and one thing that interested to me in what the captain testified, because somebody said, what happens, he said, well, they don't move anywhere, but if they disobey, if this ordinance is passed, what Chief Ramaldi is telling, and so is Matt, is if this police officer tells them to move along and they don't, they now are committing an offense, that would be witnessed by the police officer, because a police officer would say, you're in violation of our ordinance, leave, and if they don't leave, then it becomes a different, it becomes a different situation, because what I'm saying accurate as far as your ordinance structure goes, is what you make out?
Yes.
We'll have more later, thank you.
No questions.
Captain Gilpatrick?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate your directness and the fact that you know how to use the podium.
Yes, thank you, very well.
Mr. Khan?
Officer Jamie Alamos.
I'll tell you what, why don't we take a seven-minute recess if you, if you'd be so disposed, and then we'll convene at that point in seven minutes, okay, we are in recess. We are in session once again, Mr. Khan, call your next witness, please, sir.
Yes, if I don't mispronounce, oh, one thing before I, is, I have a flash drive that I'm going to now, but it's somebody exhibit, we should be seven minutes.
Yes, sir.
You need to use the microphone.
Oh, no, you know what happened, I got wired, I am wired.
Oh, okay.
Okay, which really is good for me, because I'm obviously not a good.
Well, forget it, okay.
But in any of them, okay, Exhibit 7 is a flash drive, the flash drive actually contains, you know, the entirety of the record of both Daytona Beach and St. Augustine's, I'm going to go ahead and admit this as well.
Seems to take up a little bit less space.
It doesn't need, I actually ask sometimes, and I may get to the, where I just do a flash drive, but visibility seems to mean something to some people, so when they want to see 4,000 pages, I give them the choice.
We were concerned when you brought everything in on a dolly.
Yeah.
Please proceed.
Thank you. With apologies if I mispronounce, Officer Jamie Alamos.
Officer, can you say your last name, please?
A-L-A-M-O-S, Alamo, with a N.
Very good.
Remember.
Sir, will you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so happy dad, thank you, will you keep your voice on for me, please, because, thank you, sir.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, Officer Alamos, how are you?
Pretty good, how are you?
Everybody?
Pretty good.
Please state your full name to the council.
Jamie Alamos.
Jamie. By whom are you employed?
City of Fort Orange.
And what is the nature of your employment?
Police officer, I believe, for it.
And what's your rank?
Officer.
And how long have you been so employed?
I've been with the police department for five years.
And would you please describe to the council your, your job, what do you do?
My job is to go out there, force the law, prevent crime, and try to.
And what is the range of your employment, meaning that what, what part of the city of Fort Orange do you patrol?
I patrol the whole city, I'm a bloat unit, sometimes I go to the zone, bloat unit, the citywide unit.
And now, have you, have you heard me as I define with great detail what aggressive panhandling is?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever, yourself, seen anybody aggressively panhandling? Would you please describe to the city council what you've seen, just any one incident?
I mean, I've seen it multiple times, responding to calls for panhandling, one of the, one that stands out for me was the gentleman with the prosthetic leg at Ant Catfish, I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever been there, but he would park, I mean, he would park his wheelchair between the business and the parking lot, where people have to pass to get to their vehicles, responding out there, would see him asking for money, some people would comply, and other people would not, and when those people wouldn't, he would get, you know, nasty with them, using profanity, a lot of these people, families, you know, husband, wife, young children, and I could see in their face as they would walk by, they were scared, and then at the same time, they're, they're looking at me, you know, to, to come up with a solution for, for this problem, you know, and at the time, when I first got to meet this man, being nice, cordial, tried to fight for some assistance, but he wasn't having any of that, he was set out of his way of sitting there and asking for money, and being nasty with people, and then getting nasty with me for being there.
Do you understand that the ordinance that I've prepared bans throughout the city aggressive panhandling with regard to the definition that I painstakingly read into the record?
Yes, sir.
In your experience as an officer, is that going to lessen the danger of the citizens of Fort Orange, the tourists, those who visit, and also help their health, safety, and welfare?
Some of the will.
Now, you understand that as well, I, the ordinance that I am proposing bans panhandling after dark, do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Same question, will banning panhandling, in your experience as an officer, help lessen the danger to citizens and tourists who visit Fort Orange as well as enhance and help their health, safety, and welfare?
I do.
What's the danger to citizens and tourists of panhandling after dark, in your opinion, as your experience, what's the danger?
From my experiences, getting hit by a car, causing an accident, I don't know, but I know we all drive vehicles, and they're heavy, they can go fast, and you have to be paying attention to the road, and when there's someone or something in the roadway that potentially is causing a hazard, I mean, somebody could get hurt, it could be the panhandler, it could be a motorist, I mean, we don't know, but it is a safety hazard.
Just the panhandling that you've seen, I'm talking about ordinary panhandling as well as aggressive panhandling, have you seen it, well, you did describe it causing fear in some people that you've seen, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does it, does the fear increase after dark?
Yes, sir.
Attorney Khan?
Can you move your lapel mic just a little bit higher, okay, just a little bit higher to get, a little bit better, here I was, I thought I was doing so good. You, you're doing well, just making it perfect.
All right, how's that work?
Perfect.
All right, good. Have you ever seen a panhandling done on sidewalks that approach a signalized intersection, where the panhandlers wait on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And I certainly don't know the answer to these questions, have you ever seen a panhandler push a walk, don't walk, to actually manipulate the traffic flow to gain the, the cars that back up?
Personally, no.
So, have you seen, when you see a panhandler panhandling at an intersection, have you seen him approach the cars who backed up when the lights turn red?
I have.
Is that a danger to those in the vehicle, the panhandler, and any other car in that line?
It is.
Okay, describe to the council, why is that a danger?
I mean, we've all seen, pretty sure, like, fender benders, if you're not paying attention for a second, stuff like that can happen, personally, I haven't seen an accident as a result of that, but I have seen it come close, and it upsets other motorists, because obviously honking on the horns, and they don't know what's going on, and they think that they're being honked at, just because some crazy person is honking at them, when in reality, they don't see the, the person that's panhandling, because of how backed other traffic is.
Have you had occasion during your experience as a police officer to examine the contents of a backpack that a panhandler has carried?
I have.
Okay, have you found within that backpack either weaponry or drug paraphernalia?
I have.
What have you found?
Pogon knives, pipes, all kinds of drugs.
Have you ever seen a father and son panhandling team?
I have.
Where?
The last one that I can remember at the Publix, that's on Nova and Dillon.
Have you seen one at the Coles on Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen panhandlers or aggressive panhandlers at the Coles on Taylor?
I have.
Have you received complaints from any businesses about panhandling activity?
Yes.
Which businesses?
Ant Catfish, the McDonald's, the Wells Fargo that's at Village Trail and Nova Road, Coles, Publix at Taylor and Williamson, I've been to Walmart, I've been to the neighborhood Walmart, 7-Eleven at Ridgewood and Dunlon. I've been to Walmart, I've been to the neighborhood Walmart, 7-Eleven at Rizwood and Dunline, the gas station that's at Herbert and Nova, 3664 Nova. Seen it in a lot of places.
Has the panhandling activity impeded traffic flow, pedestrian flow, and endangered citizens of Port Orange?
Yes, sir.
Now, you've heard me describe with painstaking detail the parameters, the distance parameters, the 20-foot distance parameters around ATMs, about no outside dining and other aspects. You've heard me describe that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand the concept of a captive audience? That is, that because people are someplace like outside dining, they're lined up to get money, they're whatever, they're captive. Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Will the, in your experience as an officer, Officer Alamos, will the provisions of my ordinance help mitigate that danger and help the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and tourists of Port Orange?
I believe so.
Have you ever seen or heard about a known panhandler openly defecate or openly urinate?
I have.
Please describe what you heard or have seen to the city council.
The last time that I can recall was a couple months ago. I went to the, like, it's the shopping plaza where La Fiesta's at, I don't know if you are familiar with that. So, employee at, I want to say Hooligans called and he was upset over showing up to work to open up and he found a load of human pieces outside the door.
Yeah, I'm just curious of the location. La Fiesta's in the parking lot of Bells and Hooligans.
So, Bells. CBS. It's either McKenna or Hooligans.
McKenna's.
McKenna's.
McKenna's, I got you.
Went out there, he went out there in the morning, getting ready for the day, and located a load of human pieces and toilet paper outside the front of the door. He kind of described to me who usually sits and who usually sat out there and I didn't say his name, but it's somebody that I was familiar with and have seen him panhandling and have responded to calls with him being mean to people who don't comply with giving their money. Unfortunately, the guy was gone before I got there, but the business employee wasn't happy about that. And I was like, there you go, out the front door.
Now, have the panhandling or the paraphernalia, have you seen them in proximity of any school? When I say proximity, I mean...
Yes, sir.
In your experience as an officer, you know there's a 100-foot buffer we're describing to all schools with, and your experience as an officer, will that help mitigate the danger to schoolchildren of being aggressively panhandled, finding any paraphernalia in a backpack, or being accosted by a panhandler in general?
Yes, sir.
Have you received any customers who are, who complained to you about panhandling?
Yes, sir.
Please describe to the city council any one instance of that.
The, the one that I can remember, I mean, happens a lot, and I can't keep track of all of them, fortunately, but the one that I can remember that stood out to me was there was a gentleman who was sitting outside of the Coles off of Williamson and Summer Trees. There was a gentleman sitting out there, the little benches, asking people for money. He asked the one gentleman in particular, who was with his son, and he refused to give him money or comply, started again asking with him, cursing, acting crazy. Called the police. I went out there, didn't find him, but I felt like if I didn't try to find him and try to come up with, like I said, again, a solution to the problem, how would the way that would be? I knew that we were going to get another phone call, more citizens that were going to be upset, and potentially somebody getting hurt. So, I found the gentleman sitting outside another business later on in the day. I want to say it was the Sally's next to the Subway. It's like the hair place. So, I saw him out there, you know, and he's sitting there and people are like trying to walk around him as he's sitting in front of the business. I went out with him, told me that he was the one that was over there at Coles, and I ended up, I was trying to find a way to help him, to help everybody, and I ended up bankrupting him because he was mentally unstable. But he was asking people for money and he was out in front of the business where people were coming and going, the families, during the middle of the day.
Now, you've read the parameters in my ordinance, read the distance parameters, you've read the aggressive definition of aggressive panhandling. The provisions in my ordinance, in your opinion as an officer, will it help mitigate the dangers that you've been talking about to the city council and help the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Port Orange?
Yes, sir.
Now, you mentioned, pardon the repetition of this, you mentioned it obviously more, which I ask you about whether you have either complained or seen a known panhandler openly urinate or openly defecate, true? Am I asking you that for the first time?
Yes, sir.
If you're so good for me. Have you seen or heard of from any person about a known panhandler openly urinate or openly defecate?
Yes.
Okay. Please describe to the city council when you heard or saw.
That was, like I said, a couple months ago with the guy at, I agree it was McKenna's? McKenna's.
What did you see?
When I went out there, saw the look like human pieces on the ground, some toilet paper, looked like, looked like human pieces on it.
Same thing you said you saw five minutes ago?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said the same thing that he already said he saw five minutes ago.
I don't have anything further, Officer Alamos, thank you. I'm going to tend to you to the council, if there are any questions.
Yes, sir.
You want to start at this, Admiral?
No questions, thank you.
Chase, a quick question. The, is the gentleman at Ant Catfish, is he still around?
He sits, he's the gentleman that sits at McDonald's off of Nova and Dunline now.
He's no longer at Ant Catfish?
I haven't seen him out there lately.
Is there a reason for that?
I didn't tell you, I haven't asked him.
The gentleman that you found drugs on, did you arrest him?
I mean, there's multiple, multiple people. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but like our chief said, you know, we get these calls, we respond, we're there, try to talk to them, try to enforce other laws, you know, other kind of like plain view, consent, but it's a variety of different kinds of drugs.
Do panhandlers, based on your knowledge, they typically do what they do with the sole purpose of obtaining donations, correct? When they're panhandling, their ultimate goal is they want to make money, right?
Yes.
So, Port Orange residents did not get money, would that also solve the panhandling problem in Port Orange?
I think we've tried that by putting up some signs all over the city and, I mean, there's people who, again, who live here, who don't live here, come and go.
Well, I'm saying, if people didn't give them money, they probably wouldn't panhandle, right?
This is an opinion, of course. It's what you're asking for, it's an opinion. It's no statement of fact.
I believe so.
Just clarifying my question, that's all. Mr. Officer Alamos, thank you very much. Your demeanor is first rate now.
Well, just to let you know, I'm nervous, but I get nervous just being in front of a bunch of people.
And I think it does break your...
Yes, thank you.
I think it's your service, man.
I have one further question, based on the council's, your last question. Is there any law you can make, or anything that you can instill as legal to mandate that people don't give to panhandling?
I don't think so.
Okay. And you said you tried that.
And we set up some signs to let the citizens know, hey, donate to charity, donate to...
Did that work?
No.
Okay. Nothing further.
Chase, you have anything else to say? Drew?
I'll go.
Scott?
Do all of the people that you see giving money to panhandlers, are they all Port Orange residents or do we have other people in our city that aren't necessarily residents?
I mean, from what I've seen, I've seen people who are not from our city. The last one that I can recall was, I was out with a gentleman who likes to sit out at Herbert and Nova. I was out with him, checking on him, maybe to see if he wanted to go to a shelter so I could help him out. And there's people who I assume weren't from our city, and they thought that I was out there harassing, harassing him. And I don't know if they just did it just to, because they didn't like me, but they just went up to him and gave him money.
And do all of the panhandlers you encounter, are they all residents of Port Orange?
No. Some of them come from Daytona, like I said, and again, some of them are homeless. Totally, they weren't homeless.
You ever offered any of them any services?
First step shelter, rides up to the Salvation Army, Daytona, rides up to parts of the county to try to get them somewhere where they can get some help.
And do they more often than not take you up on that offer or not take you up?
A lot of the time they don't. Like with the first step shelter, I mean, they have to agree to do certain things, you know, enter some kind of program, rehabilitation program, qualified, not have any, you know, any charges, and it disqualifies a lot of them, and a lot of them just don't want to do it.
So, then, to recap, not all of the people that are giving money, that are contributing to this problem are Port Orange residents, not all of the panhandlers themselves are Port Orange residents, and we do offer, as a matter of practice, other services if they need some assistance and they're primarily declining that. Yes, sir. Thanks.
And just got, Chase, you said you had a follow-up?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. On that, with the now opened up safe zone, gives the armed the opportunity for our officers to have an alternative for that to go when there's no program, you know, it's a viable alternative. Would that, would that give any teeth to what you guys are able to do? Because now, you have an alternative area to send them to, you could say, listen, you can't stay here. You can take you here or I'm going to take you over here. Now, I understand that applies only to homeless versus panhandler, but how are we distinguishing between the panhandler and homeless person?
I kind of understand your question.
Well, since we're saying we don't have, if they can't go to, they won't go to the first step shelter, they don't have to. But they have to go somewhere, and now we have a viable option, now that the safe zone is open at, and this might be a question for the chief later on, but I can move on from that. I don't need to ask that right now.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Officer Alamos, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great job.
And your candor. Next witness is Officer Kaylee Manchester.
Ma'am, will you spell your first name for me, please? It's K-A-Y-L-I-E. Manchester. Can you write your hand signs? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so happy that. Thank you.
Would you state your full name to the council?
Kaylee Manchester.
And where are you presently employed?
The city of Port Orange.
As what?
A police officer.
How long have you been so employed?
About 14 months now.
In your employment, have you seen the effects of panhandling?
Yes, I have.
What do you do in your employment?
I serve the city of Port Orange. I enforce the law, try to protect citizens as best as possible and better our community.
What's your range of, do you patrol the whole city?
I have a specific zone. It's 20 zone, and to kind of summarize it the best short way possible, it's going to be Nova, all the way east to the railroad tracks.
You heard me read with great particularity the definition of aggressive panhandling, true?
True.
Do you understand the definition and the proposed ordinance of it?
I do.
And you yourself, ever been aggressively panhandled?
Not personally.
And you seen anybody being aggressively panhandled?
Yes, I have.
Please describe to the city council just one instance of what you've seen.
The best example, I know we kind of keep harping on it, but Nova and Village Trail, you get quite a collection of people panhandling, and it backs up at the Chase Bank when you're trying to exit Publix, and there's usually at least one, if not two, people standing there and they will approach vehicles, they'll shove their sign out at you, they like to make the gesture of feed me, feed me. When they don't get up in their line, you can see them starting yelling at different people. Personally, just the act of walking up to somebody's vehicle to try to get their attention and shoving the sign at them, I think that's aggressive to a common person.
Do you understand that the ordinance that I prepared will ban throughout the town, throughout the city of Port Orange, aggressive panhandling?
Yes.
In your experience as a police officer, will that help mitigate the danger to citizens and tourists who are being aggressively panhandled as well as to help their health, safety, and welfare?
Yes, I believe so.
Now, you've seen me read, again with great particularity, the distance parameters between that will prevent panhandling within 20 feet of certain things such as ATMs prevented around outside dining, prevented around bus stops, et cetera. Do you recall me reading those?
Yes.
Do you understand the concept of captive audience, meaning that what those buffers are meant to do is to prevent people who are standing in line, wanting to get money at an ATM, or just sitting there outside dining? Those are captive audiences. Do you understand that concept?
Yes, I do.
Do you believe in your experience as a police officer, that those parameters in the ordinance will help mitigate the danger to citizens and tourists of Port Orange of being a captive audience as well as to help their health, safety, and welfare?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever seen any pan... Have you ever seen, um, any panhandling, aggressive or otherwise, in either outside dining, in either, um, ATMs, in either bus stops, uh, outside restaurants, uh, in places where captive audiences exist?
Yes, I have.
Would you please explain to the city council, just one example of that?
Outside of Salsa's Restaurant, over off of Nova by Publix, they're actually one of the few restaurants who have benches outside still, and for a while, before we had the trespass authorization completed, um, we had transient, um, or panhandlers, I'm sorry, that would sit on the bench, and on their way out, they would try to ask for money, um, food and whatnot.
Have you ever received complaints in your work as a police officer, ma'am, from either businesses, or customers, or citizens, about being aggressively panhandled, or pania?
Yes, I have.
Would you please describe to the city council, any one of those complaints, and what was told you?
The plaza with the McDonald's, the countryside plaza, um, that's, that's a lot of complaints about the gentleman with the prosthetic leg, um, even now that he's off of their property technically, he's still affecting the business, um, he's still coming up to customers, and people don't feel comfortable going in and out like they're sitting there.
Have you ever seen, or been told by a citizen, a business owner, a customer, or a fellow officer, about a known panhandler openly defecating, or openly urinating?
I have not personally witnessed any of it, but I have received complaints.
Uh, please tell the city council, what complaint you received, and by whom, and for what?
The gas station on the corner of Herbert and Nova, um, I believe Captain Kilpatrick mentioned how they're not allowed inside to use the restroom, so they have to go somewhere, it's typically going to be on the sidewalk area, just all the property in the bushes, and then people see that, people smell that, um, it's not something that you want to see.
Uh, who, who complained about that to you?
I believe it was the clerk at the gas station, uh, about a male urinating.
Have you ever had occasion in your duties as a police officer, to examine the contents of a backpack carried by a known panhandler?
I have observed other officers go through the backpacks.
And have you observed other officers finding weaponry and drug paraphernalia in such backpack?
Yes, I have, um, as far as weapons, it's typically the form of a pocket knife, a box cutter, a multi-purpose tool that can still cause harm to somebody.
You heard me define that, um, the ordinance also poses to ban panhandling after dark, did you not?
I did.
Okay. Has it, your experience as a police officer, is the danger of a panhandler approaching a citizen, tourist, aggressively or otherwise, instill more fear, or endanger the citizenry or tourists of Port Orange in an after dark in county?
I would agree that it would cause more fear at dark, or at the, um, dawn.
Um, have you ever witnessed, or been complained of, about a panhandler, either aggressively or otherwise, panhandling after dark?
I don't believe so. To add to that, um, a lot of the time they'll see, panhead towards the bus when it starts to get dark, um, there are a few that stay out, but a lot of the time they're heading back towards the bus stop.
They being the panhandlers?
Correct.
Tending to the council, thank you.
I believe it's your turn at this end, Scott, start.
When you encounter panhandlers in the course of your, your calls for service, do you ever offer them services?
I do, um, our main service that we like to offer is the first step shelter, um, I've been flat out told, no, I don't need your help, I don't want your help, I make more money sitting here than I can make doing something else, um, I believe the figure was somewhere between sixty to eighty dollars, which is enough to get them into a motel.
Okay. If, if, if they did want the services, those are available, you'd be able to transport them, there's nothing, policy-wise or anything, you'd, you'd be able to take them out there and deliver them to that, if they voluntarily wanted to go?
Correct, we'd be able to take them out to the first step shelter, um, I actually had an officer on my shift a couple days ago, take somebody out there.
Okay. Can you force somebody to go to that shelter?
No, we cannot.
Can't make anybody go?
No.
Why not?
That's my knowledge.
It's a great shelter, it's a great facility.
I mean, personally it would help, it sounds like a good plan, and you get them into a rehabilitation program, I just saw the article about a gentleman who went through and was able to get into his own, um, residence to live, and it's a hard, it's a hard battle when they're sitting there saying, no, I'm making sixty dollars by just, just sitting here with a sign.
So you don't have the legal authority to force somebody to go to that shelter?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That it?
That's it?
Okay. Drew?
When they decline shelter or services, what's the, I mean, where are you, where are you getting from then, that the biggest reason for decline, that they don't want to comply with the rules and regulations at the shelter or the program, or they just want to make more money?
Uh, most of the time it's because they're comfortable making the money where they're at, um, I know there are guidelines, um, which, some of which prevents some people going, um, but the biggest thing I got is that they're comfortable making the money that they're making.
They're just saying, I'm not going way out there, is it a location thing of the shelter?
I haven't heard that.
Okay, thank you.
Chase? Can you determine if, um, the panhandler that you are encountering with is indeed homeless, or do you know that by speaking to them, how does that interaction happen?
Uh, so I try to just kind of, you know, casual conversation, not here to try to ruin anybody's day, um, just kind of get a feel for where they came from, or what they're doing, um, I do know the specific gentleman, like I said, I won't mention names, that sits at McDonald's, um, people tell you, he makes enough money between, he'll do his mornings at McDonald's, and then go towards Aunt Catfish in the afternoon before getting on the bus, he knows the bus he needs to get onto, and he knows the motel that he can rent for approximately the sixty, eighty dollars, and he'll yell at you if you interfere with his time making money, so, um, I'm defining, I guess, as the homelessness as I'm saying, I don't have a stable, um, place that I'm staying, whether that be that they stay in the woods, um, or they go get a motel off the money that they made from panhandling.
Uh, thanks for what you do. Marilyn?
No questions, thank you.
Officer Manchester? Your turn, don't put the microphone down yet.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. See, I like, this is the fun part of my job, of being able to say, now that I've called you back, I have no questions except to say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Next witness is Officer Brian Schnibb.
Sir, can you spell your last name, please?
Schnibb, I'm going to be common spelled.
Thank you.
Last name is Schnibb, S-C-H-N-I-B-B-E-N. Officer Schnibb, by who are you employed? I'm sorry.
Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so happy to that. Thank you.
You would happen to have sooner or later. Um, please give your full name to the city council.
Brian Schnibb.
And by who are you employed?
City of Port Orange.
And what do you do?
I'm a police officer, I've been a city member.
How long have you been so employed?
Just over three years.
Okay. In your three-year employment, have you seen the effects of panhandling to the city of Port Orange? You've heard me define with great particularity aggressive panhandling, did you not?
I did.
Okay. And you know that the provisions of my ordinance ban it throughout the city of Port Orange, correct?
Correct.
In your experience as a police officer, with banning aggressive panhandling, as I've so defined it, both mitigate the danger of it, and help the health, safety, and welfare of Port Orange citizens and tourists alike, in my opinion, yes, um, have you ever seen anybody aggressively panhandled?
I have.
Would you please describe to the city council, just one incident of what you've seen?
Okay. Obviously, we hit on the gentleman at McDonald's more often than not, so, another individual, um, who has frequented the 711, at Live Morris and Reginald, um, one, when they set up some of us back out of first line of the call, he was on rival reports for that he was wandering through the gas pumps, talking to patrons, whether pumping gas or walking in, whatever, demanding money, um, should they deny him, he, he reported him laid down in the front horse, and told you out what he wanted, um, like I said, I was unable to confront him on that day, but that's just one, one, one instance.
Um, you heard me read with great particularity the distance parameters, intending to prevent panhandling from a captive audience, did you not?
I did.
Okay. Um, for examples such as people pumping gas, um, but, uh, do you believe that those distance parameters placed in my ordinance, regulating panhandling, would help mitigate the danger to citizens and tourists of Port Orange alike, as well as to enhance their health, safety, and welfare?
I did.
Okay. What's the danger to citizens, um, being accosted, well, outside dining, standing in an ATM, at a bus stop, by a panhandler?
Numerous dangers, obviously, you know, people are nervous and scared, uh, strangers, people they don't know, uh, people that they may think looks out of line, you don't know, you don't know how someone's going to act, uh, especially if they've been known to aggressively panhandle, they've been witnessed by people aggressively panhandling, and have fear that they're going to be aggressively panhandling themselves, um, you know, especially, especially at dark, you can't, you need this vision, you don't know what kind of weapons are on people, um, you know, like, 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 possible witnesses, I mean, there's numerous different things that to think about.
Have you seen panhandling, we'll just focus on panhandling, just visually, uh, around ATMs, or outside dining, or bus stops, or any such things like that?
Have I seen it in those places?
Yes.
Um, not to my knowledge, outside my head.
Has anybody complained to you about that, either fellow officers, or citizens of that Port Orange?
That have.
Were you yourself ever aggressively panhandling, sir?
I was.
Okay, please describe to the city council, that incident.
When I was living in the, the plaza, uh, the big plaza, where the McDonald's is, um, not my patrol vehicle, my personal vehicle, and all the time, um, the gentleman that does sit there, makes a hand gesture, you know, waving, waving you at him and pointing to his stuff and saying, go ahead and drop, you know, he would actually say, go ahead and drop a little something in there, uh, if you don't, you know, he kind of rushed you off with some sort of a hand signal, um, coincidentally, that same individual, uh, my wife and I were at Aunt Catfish, uh, I think Officer Alamos alluded to that he likes to park his, his wheelchair in between a parking lot and his establishment, uh, you have to pass him to get in there, he said something to, to myself and, and my wife, um, we continued to walk, and he said something else, uh, something along the lines of, I hope you never have to spend a day in, in my shoes, you know, at that point, I called my name, um, because I love who he is, and I think he realized that I knew who he was, um, even though I was off duty, um, he didn't say anything else after that.
Have you received complaints about panhandling from customers and businesses, or certain, um, can you just tell the city council, one or more businesses that have complained about the burdens, about the effects of panhandling?
I mean, effects, I mean, who, who wants to go to, to target, uh, if someone's there, you know, uh, in your ear, or when you're walking in, walking out, when you go to Kohl's across the way, or, or to Walmart, so it's an effect, you know, about my, my target, or the same for, for any business, uh, for that matter, and as far as businesses, we have received calls for panhandling, I mean, I think Officer Alamos hit a bunch of them, uh, a bunch he did hit, I don't think we have time to talk about all.
All of the law was?
The, it's 1031, the big one, that's, that's, that's the law I'm, that I'm on, that's I hear, sir.
Have you ever seen panhandlers utilize, signalize intersections between arterials and collectors, the red lights, to wait till the red light comes on, and then, uh, from the sidewalk across, the people in the cars that are stacked up, the red light?
Yes.
Which, which red lights, and which have you seen?
Oh, I, I've seen, uh, Biller Genova, I think it's been hit a lot, 95, the X-Rat 95, and Tell Road, uh, it's come off, I think, Live Morris, I'm sure there's others, but those three, I'm jumping out of my head, yeah, first.
The provisions that we have, uh, placed in the ordinance, covering all of what we previously discussed, aggressive panhandling, panhandling in general, at different places, the different distance parameters, um, do you believe, as your, with your experience as an officer, that the provisions of the panhandling ordinance will help mitigate the dangers, and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of, uh, and, and the tourists of, uh, Port Orange?
I did.
Uh, may I re-ask this, excuse me?
Okay.
Um, and I, and I really think I did, but, and if I did, just tell me, uh, have you been told, or seen, any panhandler openly urinating and openly defecating, have I asked you that?
Uh, you have not, and, yes, I have.
Okay, please tell the city council that.
Um, I have not responded to any of those calls personally, uh, those calls are not unusual, um, unfortunately, I think Councilman Stilner has a lead, too, as well as the captain and the chief and the constable, sir, right there, if it's not something that's in our presence, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, uh, type of witnesses, uh, a big one is anonymous phone calls, people driving by, you know, uh, claiming X, Y, and Z, but yet there's no one to call back for a possible witness statement, or whatever the case is, um, and that's common, too, because I think, I think the chief said something along the lines, they don't want to get caught up in so much statements, and, and possible court, court testimonies, and whatever the case is, is, you know, it's a busy world, people don't want to take time to, they don't have time to take, rather, to, to, to go do that.
Tending to the council for questions, thank you.
I think I've started with everybody, and I even started with Scott twice, but I haven't started with you, Drew, so lead off for us.
Brian, kind of same question, when you have the interaction with, um, with the majority of them, or most of them, or perhaps all of them, pretty much refuse services and/or?
Yes.
First step, and the others?
Yes, I, I think the captain said something along the lines of ninety-five percent, I think she would definitely love on that number, I think we're probably just mid-shy to a hundred percent.
Do they ever give you specific reasons?
Um, no, no, no specific reasons, um, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody, most of the individuals we contact are typically under the influence of, we'll say narcotics, uh, essentially alcohol, who knows, and that's one of the stipulations that, that cannot be had at, at, at the shelter, and, and I personally would rather stay and be able to garner monetary, um, donation, or, or some sort of alcohol or other substance, as opposed to, well, they're homeless, but, and they'll have not heard us physically from anyone.
Thank you.
Scott? I know you've read the, the proposed ordinance drafts, as far, you, you understand that the ordinance is not a complete and total ban on panhandling in the city, right?
Right.
So, based on your experience, and we talked about these, you've seen the areas where we're looking to restrict certain areas in the interest of health, safety, and welfare, panhandling can be done in the city safely, without creating somebody to feel captive, and somewhat trapped, and intimidated, wouldn't you say, would you say that?
I'll agree with that.
Okay. No further questions.
Marilyn?
No questions, thank you.
Chase? Uh, quick question, talked a lot about, um, the guy outside McDonald's, Aunt Catfish, Madeline, um, based on your observation, uh, could you make any sort of a guess about how many active panhandlers you might have in Port Orange?
I, I would, I would say, if I had to make a guess, I would say there's probably ever a bit of fifteen to twenty, potentially, potentially more on that one, I'd want to force, yes.
Right.
On my, my best guess.
We're kids, man, appreciate what you do, but, you know, I love you.
Thank you.
He said that for the record, too, so it counts.
Sure.
Well, we've got, it's on video, it's recorded, so we can hold that, um, yeah, you've learned, you've learned, and the only thing I have to say is this, is that we've heard five, from five of Port Orange's finest, we've heard from our... that we've heard five, from five of Port Orange's finest, we've heard from our top cop, our police chief, we've heard from the command staff, we've heard from officers with a lot of experience, we've heard from some of our newest officers, and you all have told the same story and I appreciate the fact that even though sometimes it seems like you guys are banging your head against the wall, and tell me you don't feel that way at, at times, that you get up and go do it every day and battle the same problem every day.
For sure. There's very things for our time to be useful, you know, as opposed to calls along at nature. You know, who's, who's to say that, actually, one, one thing I want to say about as far as people coming on to, to step on the road to accept a donation, a credit letter, whatever, I think Mr. Bond asked, that doesn't just put them at danger as well as Officer Alamos that I think has posed the driver at danger. You know, people, and we all, we all got insurance, since town's not getting smaller. You know, for electricians, you have a millisecond to hit the gas and get flying down the road or you're getting honked out by 38 people. You know, that's going to cause a second person online, the honking person that might be given a dollar or two to whoever to create a road rage incident as soon as they both made that turn. Everybody's going to become optional to the second person, they're going to think it's merely a suggestion, it's going to cause an incident and more calls for service. It's happened, it happens, so.
So, these things do have effects on?
Sure.
Other effects?
Than the danger.
Okay. Brian, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. That completes the section of the piece where we have testimony, although we could have gotten literally many more, trying to keep this record both comprehensive and as brief as we can. We now move on to the fire department and we would like to call first Chief Ken, now load his name, I'm sure, it's not his name or bust him, but that's possible.
He'll tell you in a second.
Yeah. How are you?
Fine, sir.
Thanks for showing up. I have a court for us.
So, can you spell your last name, please?
F-U-S-T-I-N.
Great, it's for you.
Do you swear or form a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I'll be back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please tell your full name to the city council.
Ken Fuston, Port Orange Fire Chief.
Okay, how long have you been so employed?
I've been the fire chief here in Port Orange for four and a half years.
Prior to that, where did you work, the fire department?
I've been a fireman for about 39 years, I retired as the fire chief in Scranton, Illinois, after 27 years on the fire department.
You heard me very painstakingly define aggressive panhandling as it appears in my ordinance, did you not?
Several times, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. With great detail each section, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, have you ever seen anyone aggressively panhandling?
I've had two personal experiences and many stories through the fire stations.
Okay, what would, please tell your city council your personal experience.
Two personal experiences, one was the gentleman that we've mentioned several times who hangs out at the entrance of McDonald's off of Dunlop. I was pulling out, I was in my city car, I was in my uniform, I had picked up some dry cleaning, the dry cleaner's there, and he asked me to roll my window down and he just basically started screaming at me, you're not giving me money. And I was in my city car, in uniform, I found out to be somewhat of a ball. The other episode I had was with the gentleman who hangs out near the Circle K by Giuseppe's. I thought, he appeared to be in a post-ictial state, so I was stopped at the red light. To me, he appeared like he'd had a seizure, so I stopped that out to check on him, he was only sleeping, and when I woke him up, he became very angry.
Have you ever had experience, or how many employees are you supervised?
60.
Okay. Any of your employees talk to you about any of their experiences with aggressive panhandling?
Several of them, yes.
Okay, please tell, pick one, tell the city council.
Chief of Operations, Joe Wolfing, he's had a few experiences, but I think, I don't want to speak for Chief Gardner, he'll speak for himself, but I think Chief Gardner's experiences with some of the homeless will speak for itself, I don't want to.
Well, we're not talking about homeless now, very clear.
Panhandling.
Thanks.
My bad.
This ordinance does not regulate homeless at all. Have you ever either been witness to or been told by any of your employees about known panhandlers who openly defecate or openly urinate?
Yes, sir.
Please explain to the council, any one instance of that, you saw yourself or explained to it, or you've talked to it by one of your employees?
Again, Chief Gardner and I have had many conversations about it, I think he referred to the knife sharpening gentleman, just, it's a very troubling and miserable life that these folks are living in, and we need to do what we can to either help them or move
Either of your officers or yourself ever examined the contents of backpacks of known panhandlers?
I have not personally and I am, I am unaware if any of my members have.
Have you seen panhandlers who panhandle at intersections by waiting until the red light stop comes on and then panhandling from the sidewalk, the cars that wait?
I have not personally, with that most of the time.
How about I-95 in Dunlop? Have you seen people panhandle?
I have, the X-Ramp off of 95.
How about Herbert and Nova?
Yes.
Is there an intersection at Herbert and Nova signaledized?
Yes.
And you heard as well, Chief, the distance parameters that my, that the ordinance regulating panhandlers provides, which mitigates against captive audiences, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you know the concept of a captive audience, that being you really waiting at an ATM or outside dining, et cetera?
Yes.
Have you ever seen panhandling at any of those places?
The 95 off ramp, yes, sir. Herbert and Nova was my personal experience, but I also observed that individual there quite frequently. I don't believe there's a single life for the gentleman who used to hangs out by McDonald's on Dunlop.
Have you ever received any complaints from citizens or business owners about either aggressive panhandling or paniling, ladies and gentlemen?
Typically come to the fire department, yes, sir.
The fire department, has the fire department ever been called, called out to give a known panhandler narking at Herbert and Nova?
I would assume that we have, but I have no personal firsthand knowledge of it, we administer narcant quite frequently.
Have you read the ordinance, well, do you have, well, have you read the ordinance that I wrote regarding regulation of panhandling?
Yes, sir.
Is your opinion as a firefighter that the provisions about captive audiences, about the regulation of panhandling, of aggressive panhandling, will help mitigate the dangers to citizens and tourists of Port Orange as well as enhance the health, safety and welfare of the citizens?
Yes, I believe that will be a big help, personally.
Why do you say it would be a big help?
Currently, it seems to be a lack of enforcement mechanism and I think this is the first big step for the city that we need to do to handle our panhandling issues.
So, you're agreeing with Chief Broullon?
Absolutely.
Nothing here, you're tendering to the question, thank you, Chief, my pleasure. Chase, your turn to lead off.
No questions, Chief.
You got it easy from here. Merrill?
No questions, thank you.
Chief? That's odd. Scott?
Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Fire Marshal Beau Gardner.
Your first name is Bo, B-E-A-U, last name is Gardner, G-A-R-D-N-E-R. Are you ready to write a name for this, do you swear or a family settlement you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
I swear.
Thank you.
Please state your full name to the city council.
My name is Beau Gardner.
And how, by whom are you employed?
City of Port Orange Fire Department.
For how long?
About 22nd year.
What do you do for the fire department?
My official title is the Division Chief of Fire Safety and Inspection, and so it really pains the way to say it on the fire department.
You heard me read with great particularity my definition, the definition of aggressive panhandling as far as for the, for the ordinance for the city of Port Orange, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you yourself ever been aggressively panhanded?
I have, of course.
On and off duty? Okay, please describe that to the city council.
I'll give you the on duty first, we're going to go back to Countryside, I think it is, the shopping center over there, just east of the New Potran Station. If you're going out the backside where Wells Park of Bank is, there's a guy who sits on that corner, six days a week, I'd say, in official capacity, fire department truck, fire department uniform, does the whole roll down the window deal, roll it down, says, hey, you got anything, any money for me or any food? I said, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't carry cash. What do you mean? MF, you mean to tell me you work for the city? I don't really need to use that word, motherfucker. So, you, you can't afford to give me a couple bucks?
Yeah.
Thank you. You, you mean to tell me that you work for the city, you can't afford to give me a couple bucks? Intentionally, I don't carry cash for those reasons. Kind of leading hard fires, believe it or not? I know that, I mean, for some of it, but I, I think if I had cash, I would, it'd be hard for you to not be here. Was that on or off duty? That was an on duty answer. Okay, so off duty, I ride a motorcycle, shocker, quite often, same area, there's the one guy who MF'd me, and there's another guy who's probably about 6'2", big black guy, works that same intersection pretty frequently, caught me on my motorcycle.
Now, the MF, was the same one you actually used before?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You swim in clear. Okay, yeah. Clear, that part.
Very clear.
So, there's another guy, like I said, he's a, he's a big black guy, probably 6'2" or so, and he works that little area there, maybe on the day and a half, but the other guy's not there.
When you say works, it'd be more than?
Yes, absolutely. So, I was leaving jiu-jitsu practice in the evening and he happened to be at that same corner and, like I said, riding a motorcycle, and again, with the, you mean to tell me you can afford to ride a Harley, but you can't give me a couple bucks for some food?
Have you ever received any complaints about, from any citizens or tourists of Port Orange about being aggressively panhanded?
No, not at the fire department, like Archie Lutz, who doesn't probably go to enforcement or just for it.
Have you ever yourself seen anybody else being aggressively panhanded?
Yeah.
Explain that or cite that instance to the city council.
Sure. So, directly across the street from Countryside is Dunlop Square with our favorite intersection, Village Trail and Nova. I don't know if you're familiar with this particular intersection? I am. But there's three banks there, right? One on three to four quarters, there's also Dunkin' Donuts and all those stuff there. So, when that light is red, those guys work that intersection, they come out and bang on windows, give you the signal to roll down the windows, and again, with the whole, there's banks right there on three quarters, they know if you're pulling out of the bank, chase them with your cash, so they, they work that thing pretty well.
Have you ever seen panhandlers signalize intersections whereby you've got a run-up sidewalk where the panhandlers or known panhandlers are on a sidewalk, waiting for their light to turn red so they can panhandle the lineup of cars?
Sure. Same intersection, again, we can use that one, we can use.
Which, which intersection, sir?
That would be Nova and Village Trail. The six foot two guy that I alluded to earlier, his new tactic right now is to wear an umbrella hat and he works in the traffic when the light's red.
Have you ever been told by any of your firefighters or else anyone else about any known panhandler who openly defecated or openly urinated?
I've been subject to it myself, I don't, other than the, the other two people who were on that truck with me and maybe Danny, those were the right calls, not any of the other fire people that's come into your, anything like that.
Please explain what you mean to the city council.
So, our friend that drives the wheelchair, when he first started coming to Port Orange, I was still running in a fire truck on Dr. McCordon, and he quite often would defecate either on himself or the sidewalk and just run through it, there would be, for lack of a better way, trash, poop tracks all over the place. Behind Hardee's was really bad for a while and even when he came up to the McDonald's area, he's, he's done it there as well.
Have you ever received complaints from any of your firefighters by any citizens of Port Orange or anyone else about aggressive or other panhandling?
No, like I said before, those are probably the type of person that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Keep preparing the questions in a minute. You read, you heard me read the distance parameters?
I did.
And you understand the concept of a captive audience?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In your experiences, first of all, have you seen panhandling at ATMs, outside diners or any other place where there is a captive audience?
Yes, again, like I said before, that same intersection at Nova and Village Trail, there's three banks at that intersection alone and the guy who sits behind Wells Park of Bank is definitely going to be the attention.
Having read the ordinance and with your experience as a firefighter, do you, is it your opinion that, well, let me ask you another series of questions before I ask that one. You know that aggressive panhandling is banned in the ordinance for the entirety of the city of Port Orange, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you believe that as a firefighter, that that would lessen the danger to citizens and tourists of the city of Port Orange?
Absolutely. Even if you just take into consideration the distance parameters from intersections, again, 22 years being on a fire truck, been on quite a few crashes, having that clear field of vision as you're making your corner would be great.
Nothing further for this witness, Mr. Mayor, tendering to the city council.
No.
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No questions.
Drew?
See, you're not trained at the same jiu-jitsu academy?
We do, so I think you're familiar with both of those guys.
Yes, and I've seen on multiple occasions, at least three, if not more, the gentleman at McDonald's, people have given him food and I've seen him roll over to the garbage can at McDonald's and throw the food away as soon as he's hungry, have you ever seen that?
He doesn't want food.
Clearly. Yes, and I, I've seen on multiple occasions, at least three, if not more, um, the gentleman at McDonald's, uh, people have given him food, and I've seen him roll over to the garbage can at McDonald's and throw the food away as soon as he's ready. Have you ever seen him that way?
He doesn't want food.
Clearly.
I, I don't eat food. He and I are very much alike. You know, I, I can skip a meal or three.
Have, have you, have you seen him?
I've not seen him, personally, no.
Um, and I've actually overheard, uh, as obviously in my windows, I've overheard him say, you know, be nasty with people.
Sure.
I mean, don't eat food.
Sure, you're aware of the Facebook video floating around of that, the exact particular guy bragging about how much money he makes a day at that, at that one intersection. Uh, yes, there, it's all over Facebook.
Tell me about that.
Well, he, well, it's that guy, I don't know his name.
Joe?
Mr. Smith, whatever his name is. Uh, Joe. He's openly bragging about how because of his, and city manager probably speaks to it better, 'cause I think there might be an instance of some stolen baller going on with that guy, but, uh, you know, he's bragging about someone giving him money because of his hat, in, in, in the hundreds of dollars to help him out, and he's just laughing about it.
Nothing further for this witness?
Oh, you get a question? Oh, sorry.
No, I'm good.
Chase?
No questions, but my compliments on a very charismatic customer, I can listen to it again, man. Thank you.
That was gonna fall asleep, or, no.
Sorry, man. I'll try harder next time.
Well, we should, we should have you lead off, it has all interjects. Thanks, Beau.
Yep, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
The firefighters, and now we're gonna move on to the Parks and Recreation individuals, and the first person I would call is David Harold.
Can you spell your last name, please? H A R R E L L.
You raise your right hand please, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
David, uh, please state your full name to the city council.
My name's David Harold, I work for the city of Fort Orange in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, as what?
I'm a crew chief.
How many people have you, uh, supervise?
I think I got five on the menu right now.
Okay. Have you ever seen and known or come upon a known panhandler who is openly defecating or, uh, urinating?
I have not personally witnessed it, no.
But have people told you about it?
Constantly.
Okay, when you say constantly, who are the people who are telling you about it?
Uh, all the people in most all the parks.
Okay, when you say all the people, you mean citizens?
Citizens, the people visiting the parks.
Okay.
Are constantly coming up complaining about.
Open defecation, oh, no panhandlers openly defecating and opening your.
Cleaned it up several times myself.
Okay, and when you say you cleaned it up, so a person complains to you, and is, is that at or near a benches?
Yes.
Uh, which parks are we talking about?
Um, in particular, Bushman Park and Memorial Park are probably the two worst, uh, you know, that I know of.
So, you see people who, then they complain to you and then you clean it up?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I clean it up when I see it, I notice human waste, 'cause, you know, animals don't use toilet paper.
But, but the complaints came from people who were saying that known panhandlers openly defecating.
Yes.
Are they the same benches in which children and other family, uh, citizens and tourists of Fort Orange sit?
Yes, yeah, there're picnic tables at the park, they go eat lunches there and whatever, you know, but they're there quite often.
Does any of this happen after dark?
Uh, yes, I've had a couple people tell me stories about after dark.
What kind of stories did you get?
Um, very aggressive panhandling, um, to the point of, there was one gentleman with, I believe he said, two kids, um, at Bushman Park in the backside of Bushman Park, and they were literally following him down the path, cursing him out, 'cause he wasn't giving them money, and all he wanted to do was get his kids out of there to feel safe again.
Yeah.
So, all the time, man, all the time.
So, you said Bushman Park and Memorial Park?
Yeah, those are the two worst that I know of in my particular.
Okay. And those are the people that you, you were saying about, who said, um, that after dark or in the evening they would follow?
Yeah, that, that particular incident was at my time.
Have you also seen, um, panhandlers who panhandle, um, in establishments with outside dining?
I, I haven't personally witnessed.
Like picnic tables outside?
Oh, well, then, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, like where?
At both parks, any, both those parks has happened. I've seen people ask for money.
How about at intersections where there's signalized intersections?
Um, I've seen it happen at Dunlott and, and US Warren, um, I've also seen it happen, of course, at McDonald's like the rest of the world has, um, so I've seen it a few times in intersections.
Who, who's your supervisor?
Uh, my supervisor now is Gary Stropper. He's been cursed for it.
Was he the one who directed you to go out and, or did you direct the people under you, which are the four people that you directed to go out and clean, clean the open defecation of the known panhandlers?
Well, it's just something we do, I mean, we're not gonna leave it, nobody has to direct us, we see it, we get a bucket or something, right, you know, we clean it up as best we can.
I guess I'm going back to the complaints that were made. So, you get a complaint, then you go out and you clean it up?
Right, yeah, if I, if I get a complaint, it's something I don't see on the ticket.
Have you ever been, you heard me read the definition of painstakingly, of aggressive panhandling?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever been aggressively panhandled?
Not me personally.
Okay, uh, have you heard of people being aggressively?
Yes, I have.
Okay, please tell me what you, tell the city council a favor.
I, I hear several stories throughout several days of people complaining about aggressive panhandling inside of our parks. People tell me they don't feel safe going there, you know, they don't. That alone is not good, you know, people are scared to go and enjoy our public facilities because they're gonna be harassed or threatened or chased down or whatever.
You know that the ordinance is being prepared to regulate panhandling, uh, prohibit its aggressive panhandling as you purged it by, correct?
Right.
Is your opinion as a citizen is what you've seen, how long have you lived here?
Uh, I've, well, I've lived 11 years under Fort Orange.
And is your opinion that, that by prohibiting aggressive panhandling as you've seen it, it will mitigate the dangers that you just spoke about and enhance the health, safety and welfare of Fort Orange's citizens and tourists?
Yes, I believe it would.
Now, you, you've heard me read the distance parameters and the concept of the captive audience, like ATMs and places like that, you understand the captive audience concept?
Yes.
Um, have you ever seen panhandling that is either around an ATM or, well, we talked about outside dining, you've seen that?
Yeah, I've seen it around public, uh, restrooms, um, I've seen it around bus stops, um, one particular bit there in Memorial Park, right, right next to the bus stop, I worked at, um, you know, I see it all over town.
And, um, in your opinion, as being living here for 11 years, is, are the parameter of the provisions of the ordinance which create this bucket around, uh, captive audiences, are they going to lessen the danger of individuals who are citizens and tourists of?
I, I believe it could, yes.
No further questions, this witness tendered to the city council. And actually, I wanna lead off this time because I wanna jump on something you said, David.
All right.
You said you've seen it around public restrooms, why do you think they, your, your opinion, of course, why do you think they don't use those public restrooms?
That is a very good question. I, I could not answer unfortunately, 'cause I, I have no idea.
Right there, and we can't get them in a door.
Till 10 o'clock at night, I believe, so they're about to close them.
Yeah. Say that again?
They're about to close.
Thanks.
So late night for you guys, then?
No. We're usually here much, much later than this. Chase?
Comments, real quick, you know, my brother worked for Parks and Recreation for, for years back in the day, I know how hard you guys work, so I just wanna appreciate, you know, appreciate what you've done, I know you're hard worker, your, your testimony was a mic drop tonight. That's right.
No questions.
Oh, you ain't done what we, I just said you ain't done what I've. We're not done with you.
Just have a question for you, Mr. Generals, um, does this, um, um, panhandling ordinance outlaw, uh, panhandling in our public parks?
Aggressive handling, yes.
Panhandling in itself, can you still panhandle in public parks with this ordinance?
Could.
Yes.
Okay.
You can't panhandle in some places around it, uh, others around playgrounds in public parks, you can't do it, you can't do it around bathrooms in public parks with a 20-foot bucket, so there are places, there, and, so it's not, it's not prohibited throughout.
In after dark.
In after dark, anyway.
It's not a fantasy, but it's helpful.
Right, so you, you got any questions?
Merrill?
No questions, thank you.
True. Scott?
No, I was just gonna say maybe it would help to put some bathrooms at these parks, but I guess we've already got.
Oh, God. You know, they don't prefer, I guess.
Yeah, thanks for what you do, thanks for what you do.
David, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next witness is Joshua Long.
Oh, guys, sorry, man.
Sir, if you'll raise your right hand please, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please state your full name to the city council.
Joshua Long.
And, uh, by whom are you employed?
City of Fort Orange.
And what do you do?
Uh, work with the Parks and Recreation.
Doing what?
Crew chief.
I'm sorry?
Crew chief.
How many people do you supervise?
Right now, three.
What have you seen with regard, have you seen the effects of panhandling during your tenure with, with Fort Orange?
Yes, I've seen it.
What have you seen with regard to, uh, the elementary school, Spruce Creek, and I think it's, uh, I can't read my number, it's, it's, something wins middle elementary, Southland? Yeah, Southland.
Yeah, I, I don't know of any homeless issues over.
No, no, I'm not talking about.
Or, or panhandling, panhandling.
Okay. Have you seen in the vicinity of, okay. Have you seen any open defecation and open urination by known panhandlers? Where?
In the parks, in the wood lines, uh, most of the time, we don't really get there, see them initially doing it, but we do get the calls and complaints from the citizens, uh, enjoying the parks, saying that the panhandler that was at the corner right there on Nova, uh, Spruce, Dunlott and Woods Road, uh, walked behind the trees there and defecated.
Is, is that Spruce Creek?
No, it's Dunlott, nearest one.
Okay. So, you get the complaints from the people that have seen the open defecation and open urination by the known panhandlers?
Mm-hmm.
And then what do you do?
Uh, depending on what we do first, it's usually going in there and cleaning it up.
Now, is that at or near, where you described, is it at or near, um, and did you describe it near the parks?
There, in close enough to near the parks.
Which parks are that?
Riverwalk Park, man.
Okay, and are there benches where, near where these people do this?
Um, not, not in bushes, but we did find one or two times where we found feces in front of benches.
Is that after a complaint that a known panhandler had done that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the same benches that your children and family sit on?
Yes.
Have you yourself ever been aggressively panhandled?
Yes.
Please describe to the city what that had on.
We, well, we're always in parks, uh, we usually know the panhandler's pretty much when we see him walking around. There is this one gentleman I haven't seen for quite some time, but he is a known panhandler, he likes to come, he, he does travel from Daytona down here, uh, so he mainly sits his time in the bus stops when he's ready to go back north, um, he does go around panhandling, asking for money, um, he's asking for cigarettes, told him, don't smoke, he asked me for change for the bus, told me they had no change, of course, some of them do get physical, or verbal.
You say verbal, do they curse at you?
Yeah, sure, up and down. Um, same thing with, uh, our citizens, a lot of the citizens, mothers and fathers, mainly mothers, go out there taking their young children to splashbacks and small playground, um, they get, in other sense, harassed by these panhandlers asking for change, asking for donations, cigarettes, whatever they wanna call it, um, a lot of them say no, they refuse it, they get verbal with them, um, there've been times.
You say verbal, you're talking about curse act?
Curse act, yeah.
Okay, do they, do they ever approach the children themselves?
Not so much, no, because these are so far young children, then.
That they don't have any money?
Right, they won't have anything that they would want, he would want. We've had some incidents where parents actually even took it to their own hands to say that if we don't do something, they'll do something about it.
Did you mention something with regard to Riverwalk Park?
Mm-hmm.
Tell me about that, was that, was that, uh, open defecation or open urination?
It was defecation.
Okay, uh, based on the complaint?
Uh, yes. Based on complaint, then we have guys, uh, we have a crew that gets, uh, first thing in the morning, so as he does it rounds, he knows, he'll notice a couple of defecations.
Now, the complaints are from people that are talking about known panhandlers, correct?
Yes.
How about the senior citizens, sir?
Um, we, you've never really had too many issues, um, over there.
But you've had some based on complaints?
Not them, I know, but sure.
You've read, um, that aggressive panhandling is prohibited throughout the city of Fort Orange in the ordinance I've prepared, correct?
Correct.
Um, as a person who has lived here for 11 years and also worked for Fort Orange, do you believe that that will lessen, is it your opinion, that it will lessen the danger to Fort Orange citizens, tourists and help their, enhance their health, safety and welfare?
Uh, well, I haven't been here for 11 years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I've only been here four years, but yes, I definitely do see that, that would be a huge impact in helping this situation and.
The after dark prohibition?
Yes, it, it all throughout.
Why is that?
I, it's just, it, the reason is that right now, there is no law that states that they can't panhandle, and there's no law that states that they can go and eat, depending on the manner that says that they want to, in the sense of saying that you don't offer them something that they want, and return it could be food, it could be money, it could be whatever, cigarettes, they get, they get verbal, and sometimes it does lead to altercations, like I said, we've had fathers taken into their own hands.
And you know this personally, or you know this, but how do you know the quote, fathers have taken?
They became, the fathers have came to me and told me that I had to do something about it, unfortunately, my hands are tied so much limits that I can't do nothing, you know, and I tried my best to help in it, and I was saying, they cannot be, you know, demanding and asking people for money, if it's gonna create an issue, we're gonna have to call law enforcement, and just let it go from there, most of them do leave, and they don't come back, some take a habit and they do come back, and then when they see the city truck, then they'll leave.
You were here for Chief Gull's testimony, weren't you?
Yes.
And he said that this would give, the ordinance itself would give the police themselves a greater weapon or, uh, tool in their toolbox, did you understand that?
Yes.
Do you, with your experience, with your employment with the city, do you agree with his assessment?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You heard the distance parameters around what I called and defined as captive ordinances. Do you understand the concept of captive ordinances? So that when the ordinance prohibits the 20-foot buffers from ATMs and outside dining, have you ever seen panhandling around ATMs or outside dining? I'm talking about picnic benches too.
Not so much with picnic benches, I mean, we got that thing installed around through our parks, so it's kind of little, it's too hard to say. You could have a bench, 30 feet or 10 feet, you know, but they're mainly around, I have not seen them around ATMs.
Yeah.
Thirty feet or 10 feet, you know, but they're mainly around, I have not seen them around ATMs.
Yeah, sorry about being confusing you, David, it's not looking like it. When I was looking at you. Tanner, you to the city council. Thank you.
Drew?
No, I don't have any further questions.
Chase? No questions, thank you for what you do.
Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
Marilyn?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then I'll get the hard one then. I'll get to say thank you for what you do for us.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Mr. Ferenbacher.
So, may I raise my hand, please?
Daniel?
May I raise my hand, please?
F E H R E N B A C H E R? If you would, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Will be the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth set up in that.
Awesome, Dave.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your full name to the city council.
Daniel Ferenbacher.
And where do you work?
Parks and Recreation Department for the city of Port Orange.
For how long have you worked?
Two years, five months, and 27 days.
That specific, a unique answer.
I didn't get hours and minutes. Depends on how long this meeting lasts.
I've seen this both ways, that can be very, very good or very, very bad, but I appreciate that. What do you do?
I am an athletic field and facility technician.
And specifically, what does that mean, Mr. Ferenbacher?
Do maintenance at different parks, plumbing, electrical, repair things, heat repairs, pick up trash and other things too.
Have you ever received complaints from known, about known panhandlers who've either openly defecated or openly urinated?
No.
Okay. Have you ever seen that?
No, sir.
Have you ever seen any aggressive panhandling?
Had a lady just a couple of weeks ago come to me at the Riverwalk Park. They'd come here early in the morning, these elderly ladies doing, they walk around the park to get their exercise. She'd come up to me awfully upset, said some guy come up behind her on a bicycle, and had asked her for money or something. She said she didn't quite hear everything he said, but he started cursing at her and stuff. So she came to me to let me know. I looked around and couldn't see, she got in her car and left. Making my rounds around there doing the trash and things, I did come upon him. He was driving his bike down the sidewalk, still cursing and yelling and screaming. I stopped him and I told him, "Sir, I said, 'You cannot be using that kind of language during the park.'" I said, "I'm gonna have to leave." And he told me to go up myself. I said, "I'll just call the police," and he said, "Call the goddamn fucking police, I don't care." Just kept on, but he rode off property then, so.
Have you ever seen panhandlers who have been panhandling at intersections such as Dunlaught and, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm talking about panhandling on the, on sidewalk runoffs, runoffs, to intersected intersections.
Yes.
Which intersection exactly?
Ridgewood and Dunlaught.
And these panhandlers, were they panhandling on the cars that had stopped at the red light?
Yes, they were going between the cars and the light turned red, shaking a sign or holding a sign up in front of the car. And when the light would turn green, as some of the others had said, it causes a problem. Because he's trying to run between the cars to get back to the sidewalk, which endangers him, also somebody's gonna get hit in the rear end or.
Have you ever, and you may not have ever encountered this, have you ever encountered or been told about panhandling after dark?
No, sir.
Nothing further for this, I tender to the city council. Let's start with Marilyn.
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thanks.
Okay.
Chase?
Same here, thank you.
Drew?
Nothing, thank you, David.
I'm trying to think of how many different ways I can do this order differently so that it is all as random as I get.
Change up.
But it keeps landing on me at the end to say, "Thank you, Daniel, appreciate everything you do for us."
Have a good evening.
Thanks, thank you. And last, we're gonna call Mr. Nelson.
So, may I raise your right hand, please?
Keith?
Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Will be the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth set up in that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, thank you for coming. Please state your full name for the, to the city council.
Keith Nelson.
And by whom are you employed?
The city of Port Orange Parks and Recreation.
And how long have you been so employed?
Roughly seven years.
And what do you do for the Parks and Recreation?
Also, with field technicians and machine operator, whatever, whatever needs them.
Sir, can you?
This is true.
May I stop, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Have, Mr. Nelson, have you ever received complaints about open defecation and open urination by known panhandlers?
Yes, sir.
And who do you get these complaints from?
From the citizens.
Okay. Numerous times?
Quite a few times, yeah.
And where, whereabouts?
Mainly over Memorial Park.
Okay. And when you get these complaints, do you go clean it up?
Yeah.
When you say over Memorial Park, is it at times on or near benches?
It's mainly out on one of the piers. They have two piers, one's like a horseshoe pier, and one goes all the way across the place. And it's mainly out on the pier, there's one bench out there where it kind of goes out this way, where you can sit there and watch the water. And they do the defecate on the pier and on the sidewalk as you're going on the pier.
And this is places that the families of citizens and the families of the citizens of Port Orange visit and use?
Yes, sir.
And well, tourists?
Yeah, and tourists, and there's also in that park, there's a daycare center where there's, I think it's like special needs children, and they have volunteers, young volunteers who comes and walks them around the park, and they take them out on the pier and ask that.
Is that on, in Memorial Park?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever been aggressively panhandling?
Not for money, I've been threatened because.
Tell the city council about that.
We're at Bushman, when I went out there to.
Is that Bushman Park?
Bushman Park, yes, sir.
Okay.
When I get out there, I usually get there about 7:30, and I'll start to do the trash cans, and there's a pier that goes out of the water there with a picnic table. And there was one of the panhandlers laying there on there asleep, and I walked over and woke him up, told him that he couldn't be laying there because there's people coming in with the park now. And he gets up cussing me and going like that, I said, "No, you can cuss me, just move on." He said, "Well, how about if I laid a blanket out there in the grass?" I said, "You can't do that either, it's nasty." I said, "Not while there's people in the park, you can't be doing that." And he went to cuss me and coming toward me as he was doing it, and I said, "Sir, I'll have to call the police." He said, "You call the police," and I'll chair everything out in the bathrooms. I said, "Well, do what you gotta do, that's job security." I said, "You still want me sleeping in the bed here when people walking by." And there was one at Memorial wanting to take a bath out in the pond, and I told him he couldn't, but he managed to go out there before I got around there, and he tripped over those sappers, notches, sticks up under, and kind of got a skin up, and he was using toilet paper to wipe it off, and juggling it on the sidewalk, heavy stuff all over, and I told him he couldn't be doing that, but he didn't need that blood, I told him people walking by and all the stuff scattered all the sidewalk. For this guy, particular one, I didn't know at the time, this man I hear, he's very aggressive, he'll always cuss, he'll come in the parking lot, say, "Cussing hard," and using all kinds of language at elderly people that comes out for exercise, kids, it doesn't matter, he can learn, and, I mean, just using all kinds of language.
In, in my notes, I had either, you had mentioned about Bushman, about an incident with a knife. Did you recall that?
That was at Memorial.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, there was, there was one sitting.
A known panhandler?
Yes.
Okay. Tell the city council, by the way.
He was sitting on Jackson Avenue there, we got two picnic tables, he was sitting there with a picnic table and having a bunch of fun, and grumbling and going on. One of the ladies, the elderly ladies, was coming around, and she told me I was like changing the trash can. She came around and told me that there was a guy over with a knife that was cussing and rapping and fussing at him. So I got in trouble and I drove around, and I stayed in the truck, but I wrote a rent down, and I told him that he couldn't be in the park, that he needs to move on. And he gets up, shaking his knife and kind of cussing like that to me. So I got my phone and act like, which I didn't, hit that, or screamed at 2 dial, but as soon as I did that, I was gonna call the police, then he started walking on down the road next to Publix.
Now, with your experience in working at Park and Rec, do you think that the known panhandlers doing what they're doing, as you just described, is this a safe environment for the elderly?
No. There was also an elderly lady walking around in the third front where the pork potty is. There were three of the panhandlers, hammers came out there, and one of them was laying on the sidewalk, which I didn't know at the time, I was on the backside. And the lady came around, and she had to step off there in the grass, turned around him, and she went by, one of them was asking for money, and she told him, "No," and he went to cussing her, and then she came to him and said, "All right, cuss now."
Did you mention to me something about any incident that you've had personally, or a complaint about CVS and about?
I have, I have known in CVS, maybe sitting outside there and asking.
Oh, outside this CVS?
Just, just outside the door.
Now, you understand that this ordinance that I've prepared has buffers around the exits and entrances of all commercially zoned property, do you not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you, do you, in your experience, which is extensive, do you think there is a danger to Port Orange citizens with panhandling that you know about? And that you've seen panhandling in parks or anywhere after dark?
Oh, yeah.
Now, you know that this ordinance that I have prepared bans, or prohibits panhandling after dark in, throughout the city of Port Orange, don't you?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, as an employee, with what you've expressed to the city council, is that banned, is that prohibition rather? Is that prohibition about panhandling after dark going to lessen the danger for Port Orange tourists and citizens and help with their health, safety, and welfare? If I stop, if that ordinance stops all panhandling after dark?
I think, yeah, they don't have access to, to panhandle for money and everything, I think they'll move on.
The distance parameters, like when you saw, when you saw at CVS? Same question. Now, with your experience as an employee, and, oh, by the way, do you live in Port Orange?
Yes, sir.
How long have you lived in Port Orange?
A little over seven years.
Okay. As a citizen and as an employee, does the, the concept of the buffers, like the 20 feet from the entries and exits of commercially zoned property, 20 feet from ATM, 20 feet from bus stops? In your opinion, as a citizen, as an employee, just after what you've expressed, a scene of known panhandlers, is that going to lessen the danger of citizens and tourists in Port Orange and help and increase the health, safety, and welfare of citizens?
I think so.
Nothing further, and I tender you to the city council. Wow. And thank you, by the way.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate you. Why don't we start with Chase?
No questions, sir, but thank you for what you do.
Drew?
Nothing for you, thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
Marilyn?
No questions, thank you.
Keith, thank you very much for what you do for us, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Drew. You check my notes, I think Mr. Mayor, that I have concluded for the evening.
With that, Matt, you want to review us, review for us what our next steps are? We've got two more meetings, which, what's gonna happen, what, where, and when?
Yeah, so, and the next meeting's gonna be the final one because we'll be coordinating schedules with the doctor, various business folks, and all of you, so we're, we're gonna try to get that done. At that next meeting, not only will we have that testimony of the business community, the medical professional, and also our GIS tech, we will be presenting the ordinance in a final format for first reading. I guess, as final as it, as it gets before second reading, we can still make revisions in between first and second.
Based on the things we hear on that day?
Correct. So that's, that's the game plan going forward, there'll be a third meeting, a third meeting that will only, that will be non-evidence hearing, it will only be the second reading of that ordinance.
Okay. Have we got a timeline for the second meeting, or are you still working that out?
We'll be working with the doctor and Mr. Khan, we'll try to get those schedules, I'll be reaching out to everybody here. I know I've got your dates for December already that you kind of have some blackouts, so I'll be trying to put all that together.
Most of us are unavailable on the 25th, you know that.
That's a no-go, so we'll try to get that done here within the coming weeks and.
That's probably, Mr. Mayor, if I might interrupt, that's probably gonna be based on Dr. Miles, who's very kind. He's not charging you to come down.
I know him well, yeah.
He's a.
Good guy.
Great human being, and so I'm, I'm gonna defer to him at least to give you a variety of different dates that you can pick one. And I'm gonna furnish the transcript of tonight's testimony directly to him, so he can read it, because he'll be testifying based upon what he's heard, as well as he'll be in the audience with the business people who testify. And having interviewed each one of them, we're gonna hear his sayings.
I think it's interesting, we talk about the things that go on within our city and the particular plaza there that has some of those troubles, and we've got good things going on there too, to try to help. I mean, there's gonna be a food drive there this Saturday at the Publix Plaza at Dunlaught and Nova from 9:00 to 12:00, and I say that as a shameless plug, since I'll be taking part of that along with the sheriff for. for Healthy Souls International, hint, hint, hint. So, uh, load us up on Saturday. Mr. Khan, thank you very much for getting us through tonight. Um, at this point, this is evidentiary.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that precludes us from, uh, the need to make any more comments, I do believe.
You can ask me any questions if, if you wish. Now, I, I must find, I, I must tell you, and later I can kind of elaborate more fully.
Okay.
But.
Now, I don't want to step out of line with what we should or should not be doing. But if you're going to take questions from us, you just open up a can of worms.
That's okay.
Okay.
Because that's what I'm here for. But I want to say the one thing that interested me the most and is that there are a number of very, very good questions and, and I appreciated every single question. In a way, I was most interested that with the evidence that was presented about open defecation and open urination, for whatever reason, that was the least questioned. And I, 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 that's, that's just interesting. And I think that's great.
Council questions for Mr. Khan.
Just maybe a comment, and, and you don't need to respond to it tonight. And just give it some thought. When you come back, you can address it. But one of the things that, that was noted tonight by a couple of the, the folks, and especially the last one, that I really hadn't, I really hadn't given much thought to was, um, solicitation, uh, or panhandling of those in our community that are the least able to take care of and protect themselves, which I'm talking about our kids, especially children with special needs. There, is there anything we should be looking at or thinking about in terms of enhanced penalties or special definitions or anything to that nature? Because that's really concerning because one of the layouts in our city is, and we've got a lot of parks, and a lot of our parks sit in really tight proximity to our neighborhood. I think it's over 25, or close to 20. You know, some are really small, some are really big, but there's, there's well over 20 that, um, and so my concern is, is that a lot of kids, even in the maybe 11, 12, 13-year-old range, they might even have a cell phone to call 911. And, but they may live close enough to where the parent lets them go to the park. My neighborhood particularly, uh, sits in a, but, you know, there's a beautiful park that sits between a, a middle, a middle school and a 1,200-home neighborhood. And so you see kids up there of all ages, you know? And, and so, uh, that's something that was said tonight kind of made me think about that. So just give that some thought. You don't have to, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
No, no, no.
Special discussion about that, notations, part of the ordinance, enhanced penalties, any of that kind of stuff would be something I'd be interested in.
I appreciate that. See, one of the things is about hearing evidence like we've heard tonight. Each town's the same, but each town's different. And to, to place this where it is in the context of the ordinances that I've ever, that I've already done is, is just very interesting. Uh, so you learn. That's why I asked you the question. I, I, I learned something from every question that was asked tonight, so I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Any, any other questions that somebody wants to answer?
You got it. Drew?
Good. Thank you, sir.
Chase, please?
No questions, but just, uh, I appreciate the council's indulgence on my, on my question. Can I ask them all? Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Um, the other comment I would make that really is, I guess, a request for the future. You asked every witness about residents and tourists, and nobody talked about tourists. And that is one of the principles of prior ordinances you've done for St. Augustine and the city of Daytona Beach. So, uh, I, you may want to rethink your language because I'm not sure that your testimony that we heard today from officials addressed tourists per se. And if you look at what you've prepared, you're really talking about passersby, people on the street, customers, users of services. So, uh, that is a distinction that I think you may want to think about from a legal perspective in terms of language. That's what I would offer.
Thank you, and I'm going to answer that.
You don't need to answer.
Oh, but I want to.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to read this transcript because I don't agree with you. But let me promise you something. With the next hearing, okay, where all you're going to hear, or mostly, unless I have to fill in, are from the business people. When I talk from customers, you know, I think that I did cover tourists, but we'll be triple sure next time. Uh, that's my first point. But let me tell you my second point. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter from a legal point of view, this ordinance can be passed one way or another because it's protecting everybody. And it's protecting, especially with COVID amongst us, uh, which you'll see in the final version. So I appreciate your comment. What I'm going to do with it is three things. One, I'm going to read the transcript very carefully because I think I did cover tourists and other people. Uh, two, it will be covered with the business people. Because a lot of times, the, um, uh, the people who are complaining to your professionals aren't identifiable necessarily as tourists. For the business people, even their customers may not be. But my third point is, I don't need to request either defend this ordinance or, or request that it be, uh, passed.
Well, I would, with all due respect, Mr. Khan, disagree with you.
Right.
Words matter. And I think the legal profession tells us that. And all I'm just suggesting is that you look at your language because when you repeatedly ask the witnesses, not a single one talked about a tourist.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, you might want to look at the language. That's all.
My last word tonight is.
Okay. Please do. Nothing else comes before us this evening? We will be back here next Tuesday, and I will see you all then. Everybody, thank you.